I would like to call the City Council Meeting of February the 16th, 2016, to order. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Gray, here.
Marsh, here.
Canyon?
Here.
Petty, Tenet?
Here.
Schottmar?
Here.
Latier?
Present.
Long?
Here.
Mayor Jordan?
Here.
To join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
On the Pledge of Allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The first order of business we have tonight is the consent agenda. Number one, approval of the February 2nd, 2016 City Council Meeting amendments. Number two, resolution to approve an amendment to number three to the contract Mitchell Williams Sealeague Gates and Woodard T L L C in the amount of $25,000 for additional legal services related to the White River Water Quality Standards Petition to the Arkansas Pollution Control and Ecology Commission and to approve a budget adjustment. I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as read.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda as read. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Canyon?
Yes.
Tenet? Schottmar?
Yes.
Latier?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Okay, under unfinished business we have none tonight. Next order of business is a public hearing. Number one, a resolution to order the raising and removal of a dilapidated and unsafe structure and cleanup of unsanitary and unsightly conditions on property owned by U.S. Bank National Association located at 550 West Skelton Street in the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas and to approve a budget adjustment. I will open up the public comment. Yes.
Go forward with your staff.
Yeah.
First.
Okay, yes, sir. David Carver with the City Fayetteville Code Compliance Division. We're requesting a budget adjustment in the amount of $14,500 for a raising and removal as well as a large-scale cleanup at the property located at 550, excuse me, West Skelton.
Okay. What questions do we have for David?
Have we contact, excuse me, I'm getting better. Have we contacted the landowner?
Yes, sir. We have gone through our notification process. Both notifications were sent via certified mail and did come back signed for.
And when you tried to call, did you speak with someone or left a voice message?
No, sir. We don't communicate via phone. It is strictly certified mail.
So certified mail and you got your receipt back, so you know they got it?
Yes, sir.
But you haven't talked to anybody?
No, sir. We have had no correspondence from the bank.
Just for the benefit of the public that's here, what happens in a raising project? We go in and we tear down and clean up?
Yes, sir.
We keep track of our time and our expenses and we send the bill to the landowner?
The project as a whole is bitted out citywide. Clearly, we take the winning bid. So, yes, we would go in, clean everything up per the standards of our building safety demolition requirements, at which point, we would place a lien on the property for the amount of the project.
Okay. And how do we determine which property we're going to do this to?
Our Code Compliance Division is, for the most part, complaint-driven, so we have had a very long history of service requests or complaint history on this property from citizens across, you know, the city, but mainly in that neighborhood. To my knowledge, the service request history goes back as far as 2010 for the property in its current condition.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
I know that you provided the City Council with many pictures showing the structure falling down, obviously unsafe, lots of trash around the area, but did the building inspector, the building safety officer, look at this structure?
Yes, sir. We send what we call an unsafe building determination to building safety. Our chief building official, along with his staff, inspect the property and they will give us their recommendation.
And what do they recommend in this case?
For the raising and removal.
Because they thought it was an unsafe structure as these pictures clearly show that you've shown the City?
Yes, sir. It's...
Okay. We need to always lay a firm base, so I know the City Council, some of them were at the agenda session and heard you, but not all of them were there.
Yes, sir.
And for the citizens out there, they also need to know that it's not just complaint-driven, but in fact, we go out and inspect. This, the pictures you have shown in the packet show this structure falling down, no walls, roof coming down, obviously very dilapidated, and so you need to make sure and present all that kind of information when you come here and present as a staff member to show why, in fact, this structure needs to be raised and removed.
Yes, sir. And we do have the, unsafe building determination is included in that package.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm very relieved to know that they can't come knock down my house because they don't like my politics. My house has to be unsafe, right?
Yes, sir.
Good.
Thank you, John.
Sure.
Anybody, yes, sir.
I've received a number of complaints over the years about this property and, you know, if you would look in the packet, you would see that the house really is falling down. Neighbors are concerned about safety, they're concerned about pollution from a number of barrels that are oozing things into the woods, as well as just an unsafe condition that could harbor vermin, and it's a bad situation. So, thank you so much for your work to get this torn down. This has been going on for at least the three years I've been office, in office, but I know we had some challenges with this one because it was in bankruptcy. So, thank you and to our Assistant Attorney Blake Pennington for his diligence in tracking down the owner.
Okay. Is the owner here?
I don't believe so.
Okay. All right, any other questions for David?
Now, we, no, but we need to now open it up.
Yeah. So, now we'll close the...
No, just open it for public comment.
Oh, well, yeah, I'm going to do that. So, the owner's not here. So, all right, now we'll take public comments. Anyone in the public would like to address us on this? Okay, seeing that, I'll bring it back to the council.
Is this a resolution?
Oh, ma'am, did you want to say something? Oh, I saw you get up.
I was just asking which ones were on.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
I move we pass the resolution.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to pass the resolution. Any final comments from the council on this? Sondra, would you please call the row?
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Canyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Latier?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to open up another public hearing. A resolution to order the raising and removal of a dilapidated and unsafe structure owned by Aaron Kendall Kirk and John Paul Carey located at 1180 East Huntsville Road in the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas and to approve a budget adjustment. David?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a more routine raising and removal for us, a single-family home that's quite dilapidated. We have had very good correspondence with the owners correcting several code violations in the past. I believe they are here and good faith that, you know, there's a good chance that we won't actually be raising and removing this ourselves and that the property owner will be able to handle the situation.
I believe she had some...
I can't hear you.
Speak more into the microphone so she can hear you. Speak loud and clear.
Yes, sir. I was just saying, we've had a very good working relationship with the property owner in the past correcting various code violations previous to the raising and removal. However, the timeline for the raising and removal has expired, so we are bringing it to council to request a budget adjustment, I believe, of $4,100.
Okay. Do we have any questions for staff and council? Is the owner here?
I'm the new owner.
Are you the owner, ma'am?
I'm the new owner.
Yeah, if you're the owner.
I'm the new owner.
Okey-dokey. That'll work.
Put the microphone down to you.
I'm short. I'm the new owner of that property and I had heard prior to tonight...
Could I ask your name, please?
Oh, Beverly Kirk.
Okay.
And I had heard prior to tonight that they were considering this an unsafe building, et cetera, and, but I've never received any notices myself and the, when I tried to call, they couldn't talk to me because I wasn't an owner at that time. The property is now in my name and I am going to take care of that building, but an attorney told me yesterday that because I'm the new owner, that I should be afforded the same consideration of any other property owner in terms of the timeline and so forth. And I have every intention, serious intention, of disassembling that building and taking care of it in the, once I start receiving notices, I know what the timelines are. I don't know what the timelines are.
Okay.
And the only reason I even knew about this meeting tonight is because the old owner, John Carey, notified me and I drove from Iowa in a blizzard on Sunday to get here and, of course, everything was closed, all the county offices were closed yesterday. And so, I was in a county office from 9:00 a.m. till 4:30 this afternoon, all day, trying to find out what the problems were with the boundary. There's other, there's some other things that are not an issue here tonight. But anyway, the property is now in my name and I would just like the time afforded everyone else to, to deal with the matter. And I have spoken with Mr. Carver on the phone once and he was very kind and everything, but you were supposed to call me and let me know about this meeting. You said you would. So, but I didn't. So, I didn't know about it until just a few days ago.
I apologize for that.
I beg your pardon?
I apologize for that.
That's all right.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask her a couple of questions?
You sure can.
Are you related to Aaron Kendall Kirk?
He was my son. He passed away.
I'm sorry to hear that. He was, at that point, I guess, the owner and that's how you became a part-owner?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I say, he was listed here in the raising and removal as one of the co-owners?
Yes.
And that's how you became an owner? Or you bought it?
More or less.
Okay.
I had to buy out John Carey.
And when, what, when was that that you actually purchased the property?
Yesterday.
Oh, yesterday. Okay. Well, that's all the questions I have for you.
Okay. I would have done it, we would have done it sooner, but I'll tell you, the hardest thing any parent ever has to do is to bury a child.
Yes.
It's been very difficult for me to just get my ducks in order and deal, and deal with it. It really has, has been. And so, but I, I have got someone that's going to work on the property. He's already done some work on the property for me, even though I didn't own it yet, and that's what I'm going to continue to do.
Okay. All right. David, I have a question for you. If an owner is making a good-faith effort to restore the building or repair it, there is certainly, surely, a certain amount of time you will give them to bring...
Yes, sir. We are always flexible to work with the citizens, barring any...
Can you go to the podium and answer the question?
Nice to meet you.
Yes, sir. We're always willing to work with the citizens as long as we're going towards the same goal. We're very flexible, you know, it's, we're here to help them regardless of what situations might be surrounding the current situation. However, as far as our procedural matter...
I understand.
If there, if there is a change of ownership, we're basically back to square one. As of the 27th of last month, it was still showing Aaron and John as the owners. John Carey signed for the notification the first of this month, so if there's, if there's a change of ownership, then we would just start over with our...
Mr. Mayor, let me, let me make a suggestion. I think that she's certainly entitled to due process, which means a right to be heard. She has been heard, but I think we should table this for a month and put it on the very first thing in new business in case there's something that might be longer after it. So, to give her some opportunity to work with our city staff and to get maybe some underway, something underway on the demolition or repair of the structure, obviously even after we have passed a raising and removal, oftentimes the owner goes ahead and does what needs to be done and we never have to go through with that. But rather than passing this raising and removal tonight, let's table it for a month so that they can work together and maybe we can get this resolved and we never have to pass it at all.
I mean, we table this for one month?
Second. Okay.
Well, I just have one quick question. So, if we do that, which I agree, then city staff before 30 days could, if there's a good-faith effort and the city staff is comfortable with that, then they can remove that from ever going...
That's right. Well, it'll probably come back to us and it'll just report to us that it should be disassembled.
Right. Okay, then, yeah.
Mayor, if I can make a comment, not to be contrary to our city attorney's advice, but our protocol is to serve the owner of record and in order to be consistent with what we do, I would rather you table it and let us go through the process directly with the new owner than if it never gets resolved, I mean, if it gets resolved, we don't have to have it at any meeting. If it doesn't get resolved, then we'll bring it back with the proper notice to the new owner of record, which just changed yesterday. So, I'd like for you to table it indefinitely and us to bring it back.
Okay. I would like to amend my motion to table indefinitely.
Second?
A motion, a second, to table the sign of indefinitely. All right.
That way, we'll stay consistent with our processes.
All right. Any final com, oh, so any public comment on this? Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the council. A motion, a second, to table indefinitely. Any final comments in the council on this? All right. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Canyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Latier?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you all.
So, what just happened? I'm sorry.
Well, we're going to start working with you to get the property brought up to code and everything. It'll be okay. Just continue to work on it and work with the staff and we'll get you through this.
And please let the staff know what your address is, your contact information, so they can get a hold of you.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much.
Okay. Under new business, number one, a resolution to approve task order number four with the Watershed Conservation Resource Center, an amount of $79,500 for continued native vegetation establishment efforts and minor adjustments to the existing restoration areas to enhance stream channel stability. Chris, I believe you have this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The city, in cooperation with the Watershed Conservation Resource Center, we've had a partnership for several years and have developed several stream restoration projects, including the White River on the water and sewer property, Neocoska Creek in Sweetbrier Park and Neocoska and Gully Park, and most recently, the west fork of the White River near the airport. As part of that, those projects, there is a growing in period and a maintenance period that is necessary to establish the riparian zone, get the native vegetation growing. That's a big part of the stream restoration project to protect the stream over a long period of time. Also, minor adjustments are typically needed on the project as flood events occur, especially when ones occur before the stream is fully grown in. And the bulk of this item that's in front of you is related to that. The airport stream restoration had some damage due to flooding last year, and so the bulk of the, the cost of this item is related to that. So, this maintenance of these projects helps protect the investment made by the city in these stream restoration projects to protect water quality, habitat, and recreational values. So, this is an important part of the stream restoration project to continue the maintenance, make sure we don't lose our investment. The stormwater quality management project is the main funding source for this through the Engineering Division, $65,500. I mentioned the water and sewer project is on water and sewer property. They are contributing $14,000 for a total of $79,500 for this year's maintenance activities. I'll answer any questions.
What questions do we have? Yes, Alan?
Chris, and thank you for your email back. I know I reached out to you earlier this week. I had a constituent with some specific concerns related to complaints through the AEDQ. Could you just talk a little bit about those complaints and what we've done to rectify those?
Sure. It's sort of unrelated to this item, but we did have a complaint related to our Rupel Road project, some off-site tracking due to the wet roads in the construction area and mud being tracked on to existing Rupel Road. We have talked to the contractor about that and given them specific items to correct, most of which they have corrected. Essentially, upgraded the, the construction entrances, created some, put some clean rock out there so the trucks that go across the clean rock will, will knock the dirt off of those trucks. So, that's the, that's really the main BMP that's, that's necessary for that tracking issue. They, contractors also been using sweepers to clean up, which is, is not really what we want them to do. We don't want the dirt to get on there in the first place. But they have been upgrading those items and taking care of those things, and it's a continuous process that we'll continue to work with them on. We also had, the water and sewer department was accessing the site for a few days. They're not doing that anymore. They were dumping some material on the site, on the contractor work site. And just to clarify again, that is a city contractor that, that we have. It's not city staff constructing the work.
Thank you, Chris.
Yes, John?
Chris, it helped Jill and Jane's citizen understand, I mean, if we go and buy a set of tires from Sam's Club or, you know, buy hamburger from Whataburger, we kind of know what we're getting for our money. But for $79,500 of stream restoration, it's kind of hard for me to get my brain around exactly what that looks like. So, help us understand what we're getting for our almost $100,000.
Okay. And it's, it's on an as-needed basis, so many of the items that are included in this will be as required. You know, one of the things is watering the plants that have been placed as part of these stream restoration projects. So, if we get enough rain, then we wouldn't need to water them. But basically, these stream restoration projects are a natural stream restoration, so it looks like a natural stream. There's no, generally, no concrete involved, nothing like that. So, it's, it's kind of helping the stream heal itself. Those types of restorations, especially before the vegetation gets fully grown in, that's an integral part of maintaining the riparian area. Before that vegetation grows in, flood events can damage, blow out the structure, some of the rock that may be placed, et cetera. And so, this is to help pay, to put that back and put it back the way it was originally intended. And again, as the vegetation grows in, the cost of maintenance will go down to the point where essentially you would not have to maintain after a period of years after it's fully established.
Just roughly speaking, what percentage of the 79.5 do you think is going to go for salaries and wages, like manpower or women power or person power, to be correct?
I'm not sure if I have that information. We do have a representative of the Watershed Conservation Resource Center here. Matt, can you answer that item?
Good evening. Matt Van Ups with Watershed Conservation. I'm the associate director there. We're a nonprofit organization located in Fayetteville. To answer your question, almost all of that money, well, let me take a step back. We received a task order approval last year to conduct this same type of maintenance.
What is a task order approval?
Task order, task order, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Exactly what you're looking at now. This is task order number four.
Staff order. Thank you.
Task order, yes. And so, last year, we were given approval for $62,500, I believe was the total amount. Of that total amount, we spent approximately $29,000. Of that $29,000, a majority of that went into labor and oversight costs, and that is billed out, you know, with a detailed itemized report that says X number of hours for labor, X number of hours for oversight. This particular task order includes carryover of the money that was left over from last year in addition to what we would normally require to do this maintenance work. Of this task order, $79,000, a considerable amount is actually going into the repair work, as Chris was talking about. We had this project on the west fork of the White River. We are cobbling together, I mean, the amount of money that's in this task order is a portion of what it's going to take to do the work that's out there.
What does the work look like? Do you have people waiting along the stream and planting little sprigots in the bank or what does it look like?
For, for the riparian management activities, as an example, and prior to the task order we received last year, which was fantastic, and we really appreciate that support, we have, in partnership with the city, put together grant applications to do these green infrastructure projects. Our first one was in 2008. Prior to last year, our organization took on the burden of maintaining these projects, which are essentially part of the city's infrastructure as far as maintaining natural aesthetics that, that complement, say, Sweetbrier Park or Gully Park. So, we had taken on that burden for several years. We made the request, talked to engineering, and got that task order, which, which allowed us to start doing the things that we had been doing unfunded. So, to answer your question, as far as what goes on on the ground, an example at Neocoska Creek at, at Sweetbrier Park would be, we go out, we look at invasive plants, we remove invasive plants from the stream corridor, we replace those plants with native plant species, we ensure that, to the best that we can, sometimes beavers have a different agenda than, than we do, that those plants survive, and we really are trying to increase the diversity and the quality of the riparian habitat. Now, that's, you know, the cornerstone of these stream restoration projects are establishing a healthy riparian area. When you have floods like we had at the end of December, that is a different story. That is an effect of high flows creating damage to our project, structural damage. So, what we're going to be doing with a portion of this funding is matching it with contributions from other project partners, including ourselves. In fact, we are going to be bringing $60,000 of our own money to the, to the table to protect this investment that we've all made. I've got a lot invested personally, just in, in terms of the time. But that would be physical track hoe, rocks, boulders, trees, logs, and, and plants that were washed out.
How do you move a boulder? You bring in a backhoe or track hoe?
Typically, we use a, for us, a medium-sized excavator, a 50,000-pound excavator with an articulating thumb on the boom that allows us to pick the boulder up and put it where we want it.
What percentage of our operating budget on an annual basis comes from the city of Fayetteville?
20%.
And the other 80% comes from private sales, grants?
They come from grants, they come from private foundations.
Grants from federal government?
Indirectly, yes. Through, through the state.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Do we have any public comment on this? Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the council.
I move we pass the resolution.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to pass a resolution. What final comments do we have in the council?
One here, Mayor.
Okay.
I view it as the City Council's job, a sacred, holy duty, to safeguard the purse of this city. You people sitting out here in the audience, you're paying that $79,500. You think you're getting a bargain? You think it's a good deal? We just raised taxes on these people this year. We just raised taxes on these people this year. The library's fixing to ask for another tax increase. The old fireman's fund's fixing to ask for another tax increase. And we're going to spend $79,500 putting rocks in a stream. Well, maybe that's important. Maybe that is a good thing. Maybe it's protecting our investment. But it just seems like we need to have priorities in spending around here. And I don't think this is a very high priority. I think the streams will go on living whether we put rocks in them or not. That's just my perspective. I'm not a biologist, but I'm concerned about the money we're spending.
Any other comments from the council?
Yeah.
Yes.
I could, I would like to ask Mark, from the Water and Sewer Committee's perspective. We have, over the years, been going through an issue with Illinois' watershed and addressing that-
The White River watershed.
Right.
Yes. If Mr. Latour would attend our meetings, we've had a lot of reports on the importance of managing this to protect the water quality in Beaver Lake. The west fork of the White River is an impaired stream. The more damage we have in the stream bed, the more sediment that we get. This gives us a higher sedimentation rate, and so in order to protect the quality of the water, as well as the aesthetics in the long run, and to meet ADEQ and EPA standards, we do have to manage the runoff. So this is a sound investment, and it's coming from an enterprise fund, which I guess you can look at that as a tax because you're paying your water sewer solid waste every month. But it also is going to be an investment in the future. We had a very good report that was brought to us that talked about the return on investment by managing this type of activity. And so from the point of view of those of us that have reviewed all the data, especially since we are only, for 20% of an investment in protecting the watershed, this is of great value on the return on investment that you as a taxpayer, as has been said earlier, you'll receive in the long run. So from the point of view of the Water Sewer Solid Waste Committee that has spent years, literally, on this and on managing it, it's a great investment. So that's what I would say regarding this. Thanks.
Okay. All right. Well, I did see the stream restoration in Neokaska a few years ago. The water had, the bank had eroded to where it was about six feet from people's homes. Council came in to take action to restore those stream banks, and we basically saved those homes from being undermined. And I will also remind the council members from Ward 4, the Red Oak Park, it's a little stream. We overdeveloped along that bank, and it went from a stream to about a 24-foot-wide creek that undermined part of a park over there. It cost us over $400,000 to repair it. So we felt as though if we make those adjustments a little early, we don't have to pay so much later. So, anyway, but you can see those streamside restorations at Neokaska and Red Oak and over by the airport. So, and you can judge that for yourself. All right. Having said that, Sondra, would you please call the row?
Yes. There is a motion and a second. Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tannet?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Latour?
No.
Long?
Yes.
Thank you, Kenyon. Number two, an ordinance waived requirements of formal competitive bidding and to approve a one-year contract with the Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Commission in the amount of $40,017.86 for a stormwater education program for 2016.
Whereas the city of Fayetteville, along with 17 other cities in Northwest Arkansas, has been operating under the Environmental Protection Agency's federally mandated Phase II stormwater regulations as a municipal separate storm sewer system. And whereas the Northwest Arkansas Planning Commission has determined that a regional approach to certain minimum control measures required for renewal of the municipal separate storm sewer system permits, specifically public education and outreach, public involvement and participation, and the education component of pollution prevention and good housekeeping, is both logical, cost-effective, and appropriate, and this approach has been approved by the Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality. And whereas the Northwest Arkansas Planning Commission has endorsed a proposal from the University of Arkansas Cooperative Extension Service to design and provide a stormwater education program to all municipal separate storm sewer systems in Northwest Arkansas. And whereas the cost of the agreement to the city for 2016 exceeds $20,000 and would otherwise require competitive bidding unless the requirement is waived. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, if the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby determines an exceptional situation exists in which competitive bidding is deemed not feasible or practical, therefore waives the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizes the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding, a copy of which is attached here to and made a part here of, between the city and the Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Commission in the amount of $40,488.80 for stormwater education program to be provided by the University of Arkansas Cooperative Extension Service to satisfy portions of the Environmental Protection Agency's Phase II stormwater regulations.
Did you say $40,488?
That's, that's what I said.
I had $40,000, $17,000.
Well, let's ask Chris, which number is right? Because the body says $40,488.
The second item, the one that you read. I think the agenda might have been slightly incorrect.
I will read that correctly when I read the title.
Okay. Okay, Chris, what do you have?
This is a contract that we've utilized for several years to provide for a portion of our MS4 permitting requirements, public education and outreach, public involvement and participation, and training for municipal employees. And there is information in the packet about what those entail, if you care to read in detail. This is a, each city in the, in the urbanized area participates with this. We all pool our resources and pay the Regional Planning Commission, which then passes that through to the U of A Cooperative Extension Service. They provide the services, all of the outreach, the materials, the training, as part of this contract. I'll answer any questions.
What question may I have for Chris on this?
Well, yes, I'll be proactive here. From the Water Sewer Solid Waste Committee activity, we've reviewed this again regularly, and we have to meet specific standards set by the ADEQ. This is a portion of meeting that standard set by the ADQ in their Phase II of their regulations. We're getting a partnership here, again, where our participation in this is giving us a return on investment more than if we were doing this alone, dollar for dollar. So that's why it makes sense to go ahead and invest in a regional program and a regional approach, as well as it's the best thing we can do to protect the quality of the water in the long run and to protect our risk of defying standards that are going to be set or set by the ADEQ.
Okay. Any other comments, questions for Chris, anything? All right. Any public comment on this? Okay. I'll bring it back to the council.
I move we suspend the rules and go to the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tannet?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Latour?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
And I will correct a Scrivener's error in the title and read it. In order to waive the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approve a one-year contract with the Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Commission in the amount of $40,488.80 for a stormwater education program for 2016.
I move we suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tannet?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Latour?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all. Number three, a resolution to amend the master street plan by reclassifying North College Avenue between Maple Street and North Street from five-lane principal arterial with an 87-foot right-of-way to a four-lane thoroughfare with a 63-foot right-of-way. Andrew?
This subject section of College Avenue is between Maple Street and North Street, and the city is in the process of designing improvements to this section of street, similar to what we've done in the downtown area in 2009, where we added the wide sidewalks and the streetlights and the trees. And in accordance with our master street plan, this road would be widened out to a five-lane arterial roadway. The sidewalk would be separated by green space from the street. And so in order to amend our master street plan to be consistent with our planned street improvements, which would be sidewalks right at the back of curbs, similar to the downtown area, we're proposing to amend the master street plan from a principal arterial down to an ST 63. This would actually reduce the amount of right-of-way that would be required. This item was discussed at the Planning Commission meeting, the previous Planning Commission meeting, and they recommend approval of an ordinance to amend the master street plan. They did have some specific recommendations that are in your packet. In particular, number two discusses the recommendation number two, that before beginning construction on the sidewalks on the west side of the road, the city should engage its chosen transportation planning consultant, Nelson Nygaard, in a detailed study of this area to assess the efficacy of a road diet. And then recommendation number three was that, in recognition of the important role that streets play in land use, the city should consider not just the engineering implications, but more importantly, the potential impact of transportation infrastructure might have on goals one through six. So in a nutshell, our planning commission was recommending in favor of this downgrade, but they would like for our transportation consultants, when we do the transportation master plan, to continue looking at this section of road. It might be potential to at least evaluate having a road diet here. So instead of going with a four-lane road, you might go to a three-lane road, or there may be some other solution that our consultants could come up with. Thank you.
All right. What questions we have for Andrew on this?
I have a question for the city attorney. How do we need to amend this to include the recommendations of the planning commission?
I don't, I don't really know how you would do that for their recommendations. I think that you need to actually pass this to change the master street plan.
Okay.
And then I think just at that, the street, the transportation committee can look at the other recommendations as it goes forward. Keeping in mind, this is a state highway, and anything that we would want to do would have to pass the highway department's approval. But they certainly would have no problem with this 60, 63-foot right-of-way because basically that's all we have. That's why we almost have to pass this, because we don't have enough right-of-way to build the Standard Boulevard. We'd have, and we got retaining walls through there. So, anyway, I think that's probably the better way, is let's the transportation take a look at that, those recommendations from the planning commission.
Thank you.
Mayor, I might also add, Alderman Kenyon, that as the city council has brought the transportation master plan contract, we can speak about those items being included, and then those council members that don't want it, they could amend it out. And for those that do, you could, for it.
Okay. Thank you.
Matt, do you have something?
Sure. Well, I was really grateful to see the planning commission attach these recommendations to it.
Me, too.
You know, regardless of whether or not we, you know, let me back up. Especially in the second recommendation, there are a couple of options that they've asked us to look at with our transportation consultant. I think Andrew described what's probably the most extreme of those options, the road diet. And I think we should look at that, but there are, there's a whole spectrum of less drastic options. And the one I want to talk about is lane width reductions. And this may seem like it's a technical topic, but I think it's got tremendous bearing with regards to public safety for the street. We know, because there's been empirical research done by more than a dozen other state DOTs, not Arkansas, and also the Federal Highway Administration, that narrow, more narrow lanes than what we have today are actually safer and handle the same amount of traffic. In fact, there's a section of college today that has 10-foot wide lanes, and the highway department has told us that we have to widen them out to 11 feet, even though we have empirical studies from, I think, 14 other state DOTs and the federal government that say that's less safe. So I think that this is something that we have to be very adamant about. And I would go so far as to say that if you're ready to vote yes on this ordinance change tonight, then you need to acknowledge, at least implicitly, that you're supporting the planning commission's recommendations, because this is so important for the public safety of the community. There's almost 30,000 vehicles per day that use that street. I've personally been eyewitness to almost half a dozen accidents in this particular section, and I'm sure I'm not the only one that has seen something happen. It has to be made more safe. And right now, the Arkansas Highway and Transportation Department is standing in the way of us making it more safe. We have to be absolutely clear that that is the reality of the situation, and we have the evidence to back it up. And so I want to end, you know, by underscoring that I'm so grateful for these recommendations from the planning commission, and we need to sign on to this as a council and discuss it in detail with our consultants and our transportation committee, because nothing will speak more to public safety with the way this roadway works than reducing the lanes to a established width that will handle the traffic that is there today while also improving safety.
So, let me make sure I've got this in my head. So when we do, when we meet with our transportation consultant, she wants to bring these topics up and let them look into it.
Well, in fact, I think we already have. I think that's the way the negotiations are going with the, with the transportation consultant. College Avenue is the centerpiece of Fayetteville's transportation network, and of course, it's going to be a part of the transportation master plan update.
Okay. What other discussions do we have on that?
Do we have a number on what this is going to cost?
The street improvement project?
Yeah.
Chris, do you have an idea on that number?
The project that's approved through the, this year's transportation work plan is the east side of the sidewalk project on the east side of college. It's estimated at about $1 million. We expect to bring the west side to the council for consideration for the work plan. Next year would be about the same amount.
So $2 million to make this street improvement?
Yes. Yes. Between Maple and North. Correct.
Well, it's so dangerous, Mayor. I don't know how we live with it for this long.
Okay.
Gee. I've never seen an accident when I drive by there, but I don't think that's an empirical, statistical analysis.
One today on my way here.
What other comments do we have? Any questions? All right. What public comment do we have on this? All right. I'm going to bring it back to the council. Well, what would you all like to do?
I move we go to the second reading.
Well, this is a resolution. I move we pass it.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to pass the resolution. Any final comments in the council? All right. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tannet?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Latour?
No.
Long?
Yes.
Okay. Moving along to number four. An ordinance to approve vacation 15-5280 submitted by USI Consulting Engineers Incorporated for property located at 5 West Appleby Road to vacate portions of sewer and drainage easements kept.
Whereas the city council has the authority under ACA 14-54-104 to vacate public grounds or portions thereof which are not required for corporate purposes. And whereas the city council has determined that the following described sewer and drainage easements are not required for corporate purposes. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the city council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby vacates portions of the sewer and drainage easements as described in Exhibit B attached to the planning department's memo. Section 2, that a copy of this ordinance duly certified by the city clerk, along with a map attached as Exhibit A to the planning department's memo, shall be filed in the office of Washington County Circuit Clerk. And Section 3, this vacation approval is subject to the following conditions. One, One, vacation of the sewer and drainage easement shall not be valid until such time that new easements have been filed of record covering the new utility locations. And number two, any costs associated with relocation of or damage to the sewer and drainage and new easement dedication shall be at the owner developer's expense.
Okay, Andrew?
This is undeveloped property at the southeast corner of Appleby Road and Bob Yonkin Drive. A large scale development for the Washington Regional Medical Center was recently approved for some office development on this property. There's some existing utility easements and drainage easements that go through their development site, so they're simply requesting to vacate these easements in order to build their project. This went through the planning commission, was unanimously forwarded to city council for recommendation of approval. Thanks.
What questions do we have for Andrew on this? Okay. A public comment do we have on this? Okay, bring it back to the council.
I move, bring it to the second reading, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the robe?
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tennant? Schottmar?
Yes.
Latier?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
An ordinance approved VAC fifteen dash fifty-two eighty submitted by USI Consulting Engineers Incorporated for property located at five West Appleby Road to vacate portions of sewer and drainage easements.
Motion to suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading.
Second.
A motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the robe?
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy? Tennant?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Latier?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
An ordinance approved VAC fifteen dash fifty-two eighty submitted by USI Consulting Engineers Incorporated for property located at five West Appleby Road to vacate portions of sewer and drainage easements.
Any final comments in the council on this? Sondra, would you please call the robe?
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy? Tennant?
Yes.
Schottmar? Latier?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Okay. Number five, an ordinance to approve vacation fifteen dash fifty-two eighty-seven submitted by Jorgensen Associates Incorporated for property located at southwest corner of Persimmon and Mountain Ranch Boulevard to vacate portions of utility easements kept.
Whereas the city council has the authority under ACA fourteen fifty-four one oh four to vacate public grounds or portions thereof which are not required for corporate purposes. And whereas the city council has determined the following described utility easements are not required for corporate purposes. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, section one, that the city council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby vacates portions of utility easements as described in exhibit B attached to the planning department's memo. Section two, that a copy of this ordinance duly certified by the city clerk, along with the map attached as exhibit A to the planning department's memo, shall be filed in the office of the Washington County Circuit Clerk. And section three, this vacation approval is subject to the following condition, any costs associated with relocation of or damage to utilities and new easement dedication shall be at the owner developer's expense.
Andrew?
Yes, this property is undeveloped. It's at the southwest corner of Persimmon and Mountain Ranch Boulevard. The applicant had previously gone through city council and had approval for a PZD to allow for some smaller single family homes on ten lots. And these homes also are allowed to go, be built closer to the street. And in order to do that, they have to vacate some easements that are located in the front of the property. And so that's what this is, is to vacate some easements so they can final plating their subdivision and move forward with building homes on the property. Thank you.
Okay, what questions do we have for Andrew on this? Yes?
Andrew, when we first visited this rezoning, gosh, it's been a long time. One of the issues they were going to have is trash service, where the trash pickup would be. And there was an issue specifically with the turning radius of trash vehicles being able to go in the back alley. How specifically has that been solved? I just want to get that on the record for constituents that are listening tonight.
So in a couple of weeks or months ago, they did bring, through an amendment through city council that actually changed their layout. They got rid of the alley, so trash service will be provided along the street, so it should not be a problem. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? We have a public comment on this. So now I'll bring it back to the council.
Maybe we go to the second reading?
Second.
A motion and a second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the robe?
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy? Tennant?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Latier?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
An ordinance approved VAC fifteen dash fifty-two eighty-seven submitted by Jorgensen and Associates Incorporated for property located at the southwest corner of Persimmon and Mountain Ranch Boulevard to vacate portions of utility easements.
I move to go to the third and final reading. Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the robe?
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Latier?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
An ordinance approved VAC fifteen dash fifty-two eighty-seven submitted by Jorgensen and Associates Incorporated for property located in the southwest corner of Persimmon and Mountain Ranch Boulevard to vacate portions of utility easements.
Okay, any final comments from the council? Sondra, would you please call the robe?
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Schottmar? Latier?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all. Number six, an ordinance to approve vacation sixteen dash fifty-three oh three submitted by Reed and Associates Incorporated property located at forty-two hundred West Mahogany to vacate a portion of utility easement kept.
Whereas the city council has the authority under ACA fourteen dash fifty-four one oh four to vacate public grounds or portions thereof which are not required for corporate purposes. And whereas the city council has determined that the following described utility easement is not required for corporate purposes. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, section one, that the city council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby vacates a portion of utility easement as described in exhibit B attached to the planning department's memo. Section two, that a copy of this ordinance duly certified by the city clerk, along with the map attached as exhibit A to the planning department's memo, shall be filed in the office of the Washington County Circuit Clerk. And section three, this vacation approval is subject to the following conditions. Number one, any costs associated with relocation of or damage to utilities and new easement dedication shall be at the owner developer's expense. And number two, owner is responsible for any damage to existing AT&T facilities.
Andrew?
Yes, this property is located at forty-two hundred West Mahogany Drive. It's in a neighborhood in West Fayetteville. The home was built in 2009. About one foot of the house encroaches into a utility easement along the side property line. So they're requesting to vacate the easement in order to have the property be in compliance. And they're not in violation of the zoning code, but a structure and an easement is in violation of our city ordinances and the actual utility easement. So they're requesting to vacate the easement. Staff and the planning commission recommend approval. Thank you.
Okay, what questions we have for Andrew on this?
Mayor?
Yes?
May I ask, Andrew, how does this happen?
There's many different ways a home may be built in an easement. I think one of the most common ways is that not properly staking the property lines when people first lay out the foundation. That's a, that's a common way. And sometimes property pins are not, get removed at some point, you know, after the subdivision is plotted, the pins may be in the ground. And then by the time the foundation guy comes out there, or they haven't, if the lot hasn't been, you know, strings haven't been installed properly, that's one common way. Another common way is sometimes people do not realize that you can't build the overhang of your house into a utility easement. And so, you know, whether it's the, you know, foundation, folks that are installing it, there's, there's different ways. I'm not sure what happened on this particular one.
I was just wondering if there's something we should be about doing as a city to keep this from happening, so that we have to keep taking these actions.
You know, I think over the years, you probably have seen less and less of these. I think our, we have caught some of these on the front end. We catch a lot more of these on the front end, and so you do not see as many of these, I think, recently. So I think we have been improving our inspection process that catches some of these. It really is up to the builder to locate the property lines and the easements properly. And so when our guys are going out there and doing inspections of the foundation, they are typically pulling a tape measure, but the actual survey is responsibility of the applicant. So sometimes if, if the property lines are not strung properly, we're not going to be catching a one foot error, which really should have been caught on the front end by the builder.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, any comments from the public on this? So now I'll bring it back to the council.
We suspend the rules and go to the second reading?
Second.
A motion and a second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the robe?
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Latier?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
An ordinance approved VAC sixteen dash fifty-three oh three submitted by Reed and Associates for property located at forty-two hundred West Mahogany to vacate a portion of a utility easement.
Maybe we suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading?
Second.
A motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the robe?
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Latier?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
An ordinance approved VAC sixteen dash fifty-three oh three submitted by Reed and Associates Incorporated for property located at forty-two hundred West Mahogany to vacate a portion of utility easement.
Okay, any final comments from the council? Sondra, would you please call the robe?
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes, sorry. I was in a hurry.
Schottmar?
Sorry about that.
Latier?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all. All right, number seven. Nordest rezoned that property described in zoning petition RZN fifteen dash fifty-two forty for approximately a hundred and twenty-eight acres, located at twenty-five fourteen West Lowery Road from RA Residential Agricultural, RSF one residential single family, one unit per acre, and RSF four residential single family, four units per acre, to RA Residential Agricultural, RMF twenty-four residential multifamily, twenty-four units per acre, NC Neighborhood Conservation, and NS Neighborhood Services, subject to a bill of assurance. Keep.
Whereas after three lengthy meetings with substantial public comment and opposition from neighbors in the surrounding residential single family neighborhoods, the planning commission in a split vote recommended denial of the applicant's request from RMF twenty-four and approval of the remainder of the proposed rezoning. And whereas the applicant continues to seek rezoning of the southern twenty acres portion to RMF twenty-four, now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, section one, that the city council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby changes the zone classification of the property shown on the map as exhibit A and the legal description exhibit B, both attached to the planning department's agenda memo, from RA Residential Agricultural, RSF one residential single family, one unit per acre, and RSF four residential single family, four units per acre, to RA Residential Agricultural, RMF twenty-four residential multifamily, twenty-four units per acre, NC Neighborhood Conservation, NS Neighborhood Services, all subject to a bill of assurance. Section two, that the city council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends the official zoning map of the City of Fayetteville to reflect the zoning change provided in section one. And let me just note for the record, this is not exactly what was recommended by the planning commission. They did recommend against the RMF twenty-four, but the burden is upon the applicant to win by five affirmative votes for any rezoning. And therefore, this is the applicant's last request, including a bill of assurance. And that's why that is what I read, and that's what's before the city council when we start. Doesn't mean it can't be amended sometime in the future or, or just handled without any amendment, but I want to tell you why it was that instead of reflecting what the planning commission had recommended.
Andrew?
This property is the Razorback Golf Course that you're probably all familiar with. It's around a hundred and thirty acres. It's been closed in recent months, and the applicant is obviously petitioning to rezon the property as described in the attached ordinance. A significant portion of the property is proposed to be rezoned to RA Residential Agricultural, so of the property about thirty-three percent, which is along the Claver Creek floodplain, would all be zoned residential agricultural. And the bill of assurance that we passed out, the applicant emailed this to me, I think this is slightly modified from what is in your packet. It's intended to be used only as parkland, a green space or conservation area. In the planning staff's opinion, we do feel like the zoning is compatible with the surrounding residential properties. There really is a mix of uses in the area. Directly to the south, there's a neighborhood of duplexes. Then to the east, there are some multifamily structures in the pines at Spring Woods. And there's a transition of single family homes further to the north. And to the, to the west is undeveloped RSF four zoned property. We feel like the proposal for a mix of multifamily and single family is appropriate in the area. And the zoning districts proposed are consistent with our goals to create traditional town form. And the proposed RMF twenty-four, NS Neighborhood Services, and NC Neighborhood Conservation zoning districts all require buildings to be placed within a build two zone. And we do feel like it is important to have not one type of housing in a whole area of the city, but to mix housing types. And so that is one of the reasons we feel like the zoning is appropriate, because you would have an option for different types of housing types and price points in the same general area. And we do feel like the proposal to rezon the Claver Creek floodplain to residential agricultural, along with a bill of assurance, would be in line with our goals to create an enduring green network in the city, which is one of the top goals of our city plan 2030. And so with that, we're recommending approval. As the city attorney discussed, there was, this went through planning commission three times. Planning commission voted denial on the multifamily, but they were comfortable on the remainder of the proposal. And we have received a substantial amount of public comment. We have included all that we've received, I think, at the time of publication in your packet, so I'm sure you've also received lots of comments from neighbors. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, what questions do we have for Andrew on this?
Is there other property in the neighborhood, Andrew, that's zoned RMF twenty-four?
There is some. If you look further to the south of this property, down Mount Comfort, I mean down Dean Solomon, there are some RMF properties closer towards the Subaru dealership.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Is the applicant here?
Good evening. My name is Ron Cavaness. I'm the current owner of Razorback Park Golf Course, and I just would like to say that the wholesale of this property is contingent, obviously, on the rezoning in accordance with what Lindsay Group would like to have it, to build what they need to build to make it work. And I'd like to stress again that this should be an all-or-nothing vote as far as the rezoning goes, because without the apartments, the green space just doesn't work. There's got to be a balance between those two things for it to work, and if you have any questions, I'll be here and available to answer them.
What questions do we have with Mr. Cavaness right now at this time? Sir? All right. Mayor?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. My name is Hugh Jarrett. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, and there's several issues that we had to deal with at planning commission throughout the process, and I request, I have a PowerPoint that I sent to Andrew earlier that has a few slides, and he told me that I have to get permission to be able to use a PowerPoint at the city council. I just request permission to be able to have something to point to when I go through the issue.
Well, the applicant, according to our rules of order and procedure, is allowed to do a PowerPoint presentation.
Okay. See if I can work it. Have we got to the next page? Just go down? Oh, that's next. All right, this first slide, thank you, Andrew. This first slide is basically a before and after of where we're at today. Right now, just in the before picture, I'd like to show that there is already existing RSF four along the north. There's existing RSF four along Dean Solomon. So today, without asking any questions, you know, RSF four can go in behind the houses to the north and along Dean Solomon. In the middle, there's some RA and RSF one where the lake is and things. After about six meetings, six or seven meetings with the neighbors, and three planning commission meetings, the after pictures, what we have gotten to. This is after a lot of changes. Now, the one thing that has remained constant is the multifamily aspect. We're an apartment company, and that's just part of what we do. Other than the multifamily aspect of this, we have done basically everything that the city planning commission and staff have asked us to do. I'd also like to point out the RA along the north is the bill of assurance that we sent in is, that's about forty-one acres of parkland, conservation land, green space that will be green space for F. The, in the bill of assurance I sent, also, we also included that we will cap the number of residential units on this one hundred and twenty-eight acres to seven hundred and thirty residential units. So if you have three hundred houses in the NC, then you could have, or no more than, you know, no more than four hundred and eighty apartments, because that's the acreage, but then if the houses get to going really well, we could reduce those acreages. But in no event could we do more than seven hundred and thirty residential units on this entire piece. That's one hundred and twenty-eight acres. We also like to point out, where'd it go? There it is. Also like to point out, when we came in with the bill of assurance to do the park along the north, we actually, you know, saving that green space, we have gotten substantial support from the neighbors to the north in favor of this proposal. They were here at the last meeting speaking on our behalf. I don't know who all's here tonight, but we have gotten support of our neighbors to the north on this project with the parkland. Next thing, the first thing really, when we've gone to these meetings, the first thing that people ask us is, what are you going to do about the flooding? So what you're looking at here is a picture that shows that you're looking south along Dean Solomon. So the portion to the left that is very high, that's to the east of Razorback Golf Course. That's not on Razorback Golf Course. So what you're seeing is the water elevation on the east side is coming up over the road. Dean Solomon actually acts as a dam in this area. The water can't get across it, so it backs up on the east side of the road and then comes open. So the problems with flooding are really created on the east side. It's not the golf course that creates the flooding issues. What, if you can see on the west side, the water's coming under the road, and the floodplain is doing exactly what it should do. When there's a large rain event, it spreads out, then over, you know, a short period of time, it comes back into the channel. The reason that this picture exists is that box culvert right there. That is Google Earth, and you're looking at the box culvert to the east. That box is just too small. It cannot, when there's a large rain event, enough water cannot get through there to, for the creek to flow properly. The issue that's coming, the flooding that people will talk about, is all to the east of Dean Solomon, and nothing we can do on the Razorback Golf Course property solves the flooding created there on the east side of the road. So where I'm going with that is, when the single-family portion of this, the RSF four on Dean Solomon develops, like any other development in town, half-street improvements are going to have to be made. So as it goes south from this area, curb and gutter are going to have to be put in, the road will be improved, the half-street improvements, whatever city engineering says, half-street improvements will have to be made at Dean Solomon. Well, we are willing, if we are approved tonight, we are willing to pay up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the city so that the city can address this problem and fix the flooding in this area. So if we are approved, we can add that to the conditions of approval. The next issue that we hear a lot are schools, is that we're going to, that schools are overcrowded, and that where are you going to put all these school kids? So we need to address all the school kids that don't have anywhere to go. Well, the fact is, if you really look at the numbers, that's really a non-issue. The, I got these numbers from the Fayetteville Public Schools. Right now, there's nine thousand five hundred and three kids in the Fayetteville Public Schools. The census says that there are thirty-six thousand one hundred and eighty-eight housing units in the City of Fayetteville. You divide that out, you get point two-six school-aged children per residential housing unit. So to have some type of comparison, if the entire Razorback Golf Course was RSF four, you take four times one hundred and twenty-eight times point two-six, you get a hundred and thirty-three school kids. If you look at our proposal, if you have the NC, which would be two hundred and fifty homes, with the bill of assurance capped at seven thirty, is where I'm getting these numbers. If you have two hundred and fifty homes times point two-six, that's sixty-five school kids. In our apartments, we have one and two-bedroom apartments. The fact is, we just do not have that many school-aged children. By the time your kids start getting old, they move to other accommodations generally. So we have, across our system, we have about point one school-aged children per apartment unit. So that's where I get that number, and that, we have about forty thousand apartment units, and that's across the board, so that's a pretty good sample to say. So you have, I think it's point one-two, so you've got fifty-two kids, so a total of a hundred and seventeen school kids. So we actually have less with our proposal than if the entire site was RSF four. So the next big issue you hear, especially here, is traffic. Dean Solomon is under, you know, you can't put any more traffic on Dean Solomon. So this map that I have here is from the Arkansas Highway Department. Highway Department has, you know, they do traffic counts all over the place, and what I initially set out to do is I was going to go back and I was going to highlight all the roads in Fayetteville that have more traffic than Dean Solomon. So I was going to show how the system worked. Well, what you find out is that every road in Fayetteville has more traffic than Dean Solomon. So Dean Solomon is in blue. The orange that you can see, kind of on the outskirts here, those are the only roads I could find that had less traffic than Dean Solomon does right now. The traffic count on Dean Solomon is about two thousand trips per day. That, for a two-lane open-ditch road, that is just not that many. So we did some numbers. So if you take existing traffic, two thousand trips per day, that's what's there right now, according to the highway department. These trip generation numbers, these are from the National Institute of Traffic Engineers. This is what the city engineering's going to use, what any traffic engineer will use to project traffic. So on an apartment home, they use basically seven trips a day. On a detached, single-family home, they use about ten trips a day. So if you, again, using our seven hundred and thirty cap, if you add full build-out, we'll be adding about fifty-three hundred trips per day to Dean Solomon. That leaves it at a total with the existing traffic of seventy-three hundred trips per day. To compare that with what we're dealing with in Fayetteville right now, Mission Boulevard has, is two-lane, open-ditch, sixteen thousand trips per day. Old Wire, two-lane, open-ditch, eighty-two hundred trips per day. Drake Street, two-lane, open-ditch, ninety-eight hundred trips per day. Zion, two-lane, open-ditch, eighty-four hundred trips per day. Highway one-twelve, which is by the drive-through, two-lane, open-ditch, eighty-nine hundred trips per day. Razorback Road, north of the stadium, two-lane, open-ditch, ten thousand trips per day. By the time, you know, with half-street improvements done to the residential portion of Dean Solomon, that gets you a two-lane curb-and-guttered street township, which is two-lane, where curb-and-gutter has nineteen thousand trips per day. This, Dean Solomon is actually underserved. There is not enough traffic on Dean Solomon, so saying that Dean Solomon has too much traffic just does not bear out. And again, this is, all these trips are assuming that one hundred percent of the traffic out of this development would go north, which that's just not the case. The majority of the traffic is going to go back to the south to get to forty-nine. So even with a hundred percent of the traffic going north, which logic would tell you isn't going to happen, then you're still underserved existing two-lane, open-ditch roads in the City of Fayetteville. Traffic at this site is just not an issue. The next big issue we hear is crime. I actually had a lady at church ask me, please don't build Betty Jo behind my house. She actually told me that. There is a big misconception about apartments and crime. It is a misconception. So we asked the Fayetteville Community Policing Department to get us all the calls, this is as of December fifteenth, all the calls that had to do with the Lynx at Fayetteville. That would be the most similar development we would have. The Lynx is ten years old, so nine years old. So as of December, there were three hundred and forty-nine calls, or point five-seven calls per residence. The city in general, at that same time, had a hundred and six thousand calls, or two point nine calls per residence. Now, I'm not saying that issues don't happen. Issues do happen, but I am saying that we're six times safer than the city in general, which the city has issues that happen also. If, this is the most fair way to calculate these numbers that we've come up with. If there's a different way to calculate these numbers, we would love to look at it, but the management that Mr. Lindsay has put in place really is the reasoning behind this. If you have, everybody who lives with us has to go through a background search, or background check, I'm sorry. If you have a felony on your record, you don't live with us. If you have a sexually-related misdemeanor, you don't live with us. If you really act out too many times, if you live with us, we move you out. Now, if you have a single-family home and they rent it to somebody, there's nothing you can do about it. In our developments, we can do something about it, and because that Mr. Lindsay has developed a system that manages our developments very, very intensively, we have crime rates that are a fraction of the city we're in, all across our system. And another way that, you know, people will say, I'm making up numbers or whatever, Mr. Lindsay's had apartments in Fayetteville for thirty-five years. Y'all know from living here that there, none of the developments Mr. Lindsay has put in are a crime problem. Like I said, do issues happen? Yes, they happen, but they happen everywhere, and I would say that the numbers bear out. They happen a fraction of the time at Mr. Lindsay's developments than they do in the city in general. And the reason, the reason that we're here tonight is the fact that Fayetteville needs apartments. That's why we're looking to do this. That's why we're requesting the rezone. Right now, in Fayetteville, we have about fifty-eight hundred apartments. They are ninety-nine point six-one percent occupied as of this morning. They're full. The Skyline Report says that seven hundred and fifty people a month are moving into this area. Over the last few years, the city has approved a lot of student housing. A lot of student housing has gone in, you know, around the university, kind of downtown. Well, what we do, we have about sixty percent non-student housing in our developments. Now, we have Southern View, which is right by Ramy, that's about ninety-two percent students. But then you go down the spectrum to Paradise View, which is off a crossover, is seven percent students, and then we have stuff all across the board. So in general, about sixty percent of the people that live with us in Fayetteville are normal working people. They're not students. And people who work here in Fayetteville, people who live, that are moving to Fayetteville, need to have a place to live in Fayetteville. So if you look at the existing zoned multifamily that's in Fayetteville right now, that's about what you have. It's vacant, it doesn't have something built on it already. Now, I may have missed an acre tract here or there, but this is a pretty good representation of it. You have a piece up on Zion, that's the very top one. You have a piece that's behind Panera Bread that doesn't have a road to it. It's landlocked at the moment. You have a few pieces down off of Huntsville. You have a piece south, that's at RMF twelve, which is south of Martin Luther King, probably will be developed at some point. The other RMF twenty-four down there, I don't even know how you get to that, and then there's a piece up there west of Rupel. Now, there is actually, there's RMF twenty-four that's immediately adjacent to Razorback Golf Course. It's right there, I don't have it circled on here. We tried to buy that. We talked to them. It's not for sale, and it's going to go as commercial. They're car dealers, they're holding that for a commercial use. So Fayetteville needs apartments. People are moving in. If something is going to happen, the areas that are desirable are farther north. That's why the last two non-student groups, the, next to the Razorback Theater, and then in behind Target, they chose to locate up north. That's where the market is right now. So if we, if Fayetteville wants to have apartments, there's going to have to be some type of accommodation, some type of rezoning in the northern, in the northern and western parts of town. That's where, that's where people want to be. Those pieces down, down on, in the south and east parts of town were there, and the people who came in from out of town looking for property, they chose not to buy those. Those are all in the market right now. So if you look at all of the interstate exits in Fayetteville, you can see on the map, just by the zoning colors, you know, Martin Luther King, higher-density houses come in, services come in, so you're pulling your development closer to infrastructure. You can see Weddington up there. Higher-density houses are coming in, services are coming in, so you're not spreading everything out. If you look at Porter Road, Porter Road is the only interstate exit that we have that has not started to provide services and housing close to forty-nine. The site that we're looking at is four-tenths of a mile from forty-nine. It is an infill site. The other side of the road, university-owned, so nothing's going to go in there, but Fayetteville is growing, the area is growing, and we can't afford to put people often in the outskirts. The, you know, the reason city staff is in favor of this is that it's close to services, it is close to existing infrastructure, and we would hope that y'all look favorably on our request, and if there's any questions I can answer, I'd be happy to.
I actually have a question, and you may not be able to answer it, but do you know if the university provides Razorback tran, well, is there Razorback transit stops anywhere close to that?
You have to request it, and they won't request it, they won't deal with your request until you have your development done. So like at the Lynx at Fayetteville, there's a little square area that we've put a bus stop, and a bus comes through there now, but it was over by the Harps, but it took us a while to deal with them because changing routes, they have to have the existing load base, so that, to answer your question, the short answer is no. I don't think, I don't know, but I would doubt there's a stop close. The first thing we would do is try to get on the route, but with that site, what I would anticipate would not be as heavily student as some of the others. Now, nobody can say that, but number one, we will try to get on the transit. We've done it everywhere we can.
You have a process in place?
We have a process in place, yes. We did it, we actually built the bus station, a little bus, covered bus stop for it, so we would try to do it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any other questions? Yes, Al?
Well, I'll have some later.
Okay, sure. Okay, now, Alan, you said you had something?
Yes, I just, I've been working with some citizens to gather some public input and just kind of organize the surrounding neighbors' thoughts into some clear and concise ideas for the purposes of maximizing our time in a very concise presentation. We've given presentations at the council level before. I worked with a constituent to put this together. I didn't realize until today that when I talked with Kit, that's actually against our rules of procedure. So I'd like to make a motion to suspend our rules so that this presentation can be made, and it will save us some time, and I think be much more organized. I'll make that motion.
What is, oh, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Kit, what's your take on the?
Well, this is a typical motion to suspend the rules, and our rules say that staff and applicants can make video presentations, but it doesn't say anything about Alderman or the opposition. Here, staff did not make a presentation. Normally, that's kind of the opposition back and forth, and this time, it's a different situation, so it does seem fair to let the other side have a chance to present their side, just like the applicants have had a chance to present their side.
And I'll add that I've personally seen this, worked on it, and it's, it would just save us a lot of time and be more efficient to let them be a little bit more organized, I think.
All right. Sandra, would you call a row on that?
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Shopmar? Latier?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Okay, Al.
Thank you. I'm going to hand a packet to each council member after I get to the press. I'm going to hand a packet to each council member after I get to the press and...
Mayor, while we get set up, just to, uh, correct the actual facts so we don't have misinformation out there, Chief Taber notified me that the number used for police calls in the presentation, which I think was like 106,000, must have been the total cause to CDC. The number of calls for police calls was 45,000 last year, and that was a record. So they take calls for all types of things, but the actual police-related calls was 45,000.
All right. My name is John Bull. I'm a resident of Flore Court, which is just adjacent to this property, just to the east. And I've worked with a, a group of residents to kind of organize and do exactly what Alderman Long described. So I want to say thank you for, uh, suspending the rules and giving me the opportunity to speak. At the first planning commission meeting, we all spoke individually, and the same subjects and concerns came up over and over again, and basically we beat a dead horse. Wasted a lot of time, and so in doing this, we're trying to avoid that tonight. Show respect for your time. I'm going to represent 93 households who have specifically asked me to speak on their behalf tonight. That's more than 150 people who are foregoing their opportunity to speak, which that could keep us going for a while, right? And further respect your time, I'm not going to dramatically read every name as I did in the second planning commission meeting. It would take about five minutes to do. Instead, I've listed them there in your packet, which you've got a copy of all the slides. And speaking of the packet, don't get scared by the size of it. It's a lot of pictures, we'll have some show-and-tell time, and we'll fly through it pretty quick. I would like to say that, um, as we go through it, based on the new update to the Bill of Assurance, uh, which we weren't privy to, the numbers are going to be a little bit off. I'll go ahead and state them if you've got a pen, you can jot them down, or just keep them in mind. I don't think it really sways a whole lot of what I'm trying to say, but there are going to be a few numbers that are off. With that in mind, what I'd ask you to do tonight is to consider the numbers, facts, the photos, scale comparisons, to try to make a logical decision on whether this proposal is what's best for the city of Fayetteville and its residents. We have over 1,041 people who have signed our online petitions, and 820-some-odd people who are following our Facebook page who don't believe this fits. So before we start, I do want to say four quick things. One is that we have nothing against Lindsay Company, um, or the Lindsay family. I highly, highly respect, uh, both the company and Jim Lindsay, Lindy, and the people that we've been working with. They've been great, and they've been great at the city of Fayetteville and the university for a long time. Second, we're not against development on this course. Uh, we understand there's going to be development on the course, we support it, we just want it to be responsible development. Third, aside from the cap of units in that Bill of Assurance, we don't believe that the RA section really provides any tangible benefits to the, the residents. Uh, the area that's being given is the area that you're going to see pictures of in a moment is constantly flooded. So I have not spoken to a developer yet who's willing to take on the cost and risk to build in that area to begin with. So whether or not this goes through, that area should remain, uh, wetlands and, and green space. And then finally, we'll talk a little bit about Dean Solomon tonight, and I need you to understand that it's the only access to this property. There is no access to this property east or west. This is the one road that goes through there, it's boxed in by 49, so there's only one way in and out. So every car we talk about, it's traveling on Dean Solomon Road. So I'll jump over to the listing of names of the 93 households. We'll just jump through this quickly. And so I was told by a, uh, planning commissioner that the city attorney would say that a rezoning action is all about a determination of compatibility. But to keep in mind that compatibility isn't simply, uh, a question of similarity, but if the two areas are capable of existing together in harmony. And so that's how I'd like to look at it tonight. And as residents, our concerns are summed up with lack of capable infrastructure, that's both roads and schools, flood concerns, environmental impact, crime, and the adjacent zoning and whether it's compatible. And I'm going to speak on four of those tonight, the ones that are in bold. All right, so at the first meeting, Commissioner Hoskins made a comment, and he said, "If this is not a plan that people would support, I guess my question is, what kind of plan would they support?" And I haven't seen that tonight. And so I really took that home with me and thought, you know what? I made an assumption that Lindsay wasn't going to want to compromise on this deal, that apartments had to be part of the deal, but let's, let's give it a shot. Let's see what we can do. And so a couple of other, uh, local residents and I started working with Lindsay Group, and they were great to work with us. Uh, we met with them, uh, probably three times at their office, I walked the property with them, exchanged countless emails, and we even exchanged a few proposals that we thought might be a good solution. However, in the end, uh, my assumption kind of did come correct, and it was correct. And it's that Lindsay, they don't develop single-family properties. And as they've already stated, if apartments aren't part of the deal, then they're out. So any compromise made by Lindsay would have to preclude apartments. Apartments are where the biggest issue is here with the number of people and the number of units, the number of vehicles, and so there just wasn't a compromise that we were able to, to come to. So let's talk a little bit about the scale of this. There's 128 acres of total land, but really 75 acres are developable. Uh, the rest are either ponds, or too steep a grade, or in the, the flood, uh, flood plain and, and wetlands, really. And so if we look at it, and we look at the numbers, if we say the current zoning today, and we consider that all 28, 128 acres, we're talking about 220 units. And that would equate to about 440 vehicles at, to per unit. If we look at the 75 acres, and we say, "Let's rezone it all RSF4," we're looking at 300 units, 600 vehicles. If we say, "Let's go to NC," which a lot of this property is NC, and we say, "Let's do all 75 acres, NC," and that's roughly six units per acre, uh, I think it's a fair estimate that I've gotten from developers, we're talking 450 units. What they've promised to delimit it to is 738 units. So we're looking at 1,476 vehicles. So to illustrate the scale of that, and forgive me a little bit, if you have looked over our website, I really do appreciate it. Uh, you're going to see a lot of this looks familiar, and it's one reason I'm going to go through it fairly quickly. Fayetteville Auto Park has 1,377 vehicles. We're looking at putting, uh, 1,476 on this property. So this little fifth of a mile space is going to have more vehicles moving around at times than Fayetteville Auto Park has, and most of them are parked. If we look at what that means for traffic, the Institute of Transportation Engineers estimates that one supercenter receives approximately 10,000 visits a day. Based on their numbers, I'm not going to change, adjust this to 7,300. And that's, that's based on what they told us a moment ago that this would be. So it's a little bit shy of a supercenter, so we've made some progress, but we're still talking about a significant, uh, amount of traffic on this road. So what does that mean here? If we look at the numbers, and again, I'm just going to jump to the bottom here, you combine it with 500 residences, and these are residences within 2,500 feet of Dean Solomon. So these are, we could put a whole lot more in here. We're talking about 17,300 trips. And that's using their, uh, estimate of, of 10 vehicle trips a day per residence. And applying that to our residents, I had only assumed, uh, four. So I was, I was giving them a lot of credit on that. If, uh, if we look at what that scale, I'm sorry. Okay, so if we look at that scale and we apply it to the roads, and we look at what is the harmony with the roads, we'll get back to that buzzword. Um, and again, Dean Solomon is the only inlet and outlet from this property. So we look at, what I do is I went and I looked at the guiding policies. We've got a master street plan, so I figure we ought to pay attention to it and we ought to use it. Um, it's pretty clear from, uh, Mr. Jarrett's presentation that a lot of streets in Fayetteville are already over capacity, uh, based on what the master street plan would show, but in this case, um, I do suggest we look at it. So we look at those guiding policies, we jump over, and we'll move through this pretty quickly. This is a residential street, and there's two pieces that I want you to pay attention to. One is, uh, the width, which is 20 feet wide, and the other is the number of vehicles per day, which is fewer than 300. If we look at a minor arterial street, we're looking at a 54-foot-wide, four-lane road with a, a vehicle capacity recommended below 12,200 vehicles. So we need to go back now and look at that, uh, 17,300, uh, if this is put in place with current residences, and we're exceeding it by quite a bit. So why are the street widths relevant? Well, I went out and I measured Dean Solomon Road in four spots. I think my tape measure got run over twice. What I found was that all the way up and down Dean Solomon, it's about 20 feet wide. Uh, the bridge is a little bit more, uh, one of the entrances to where the RMF is, is a little bit less. So Dean Solomon is basically a 20-foot-wide road. So now, if we apply some of the logic we've come to, what we're basically looking at is a street comparable to a residential street that's 20 feet in width, which this proposal aims to use for 17,300 cars per day, which is too many for a minor arterial street that's more than twice its width. And that just sounds dangerous to me. And then, in response to the, uh, the idea, which we've heard tossed around a lot, some of the planning commissioners, some here, about Lindsay donating money and helping to widen the roads, uh, there, it's a bigger issue than that in this location. The road is two miles long, this property is only adjacent to a half-mile of it. So it's really impossible to require Lindsay to repair and expand and widen the entire road. It's just too expensive. And then further, even if they agree to do so, we've got two issues on the north and the south ends. On the south end, we have a recently redesigned intersection with Mount Comfort Road, which I don't think we're going to have them go back and totally redesign right, right away again. And then at the north end, we butt up to 112, which is a state highway, and the state isn't going to give them permission to go make modifications to that road. We're already running into that with the mayor's box. So there's really nothing that can be done, even if they agree to spend millions of dollars to make this a four-lane road all the way up and down. Our second issue is drainage, and what is, what is the harmony there? How, how would this impact it? And I did hear, uh, what Mr. Jarrett said, and that a lot of the issues are to the east of this, and I agree, but what I want you to notice, I'm going to flip through these photos quickly, you've got them there in front of you. Notice that most of these photos are west, that are actually relevant to this project. If they widen that drainage box, it doesn't impact the rest, it actually probably worsens it because more flow goes there more quickly. Uh, and I'll get to the reasons why here in a moment. But this is on Flore Court, looking at the course, so this is the property we're talking about. Y'all know we got, uh, a little bit of rain on, uh, around December 27th this year, and so, uh, the, some of these photos are from that time period. I do want to note that, uh, even though December 27th was not a 100-year flood event, we're told, uh, however, we have that type of event about twice a year, uh, in this location. Some houses have been flooded, most yards have been flooded, uh, water goes up people's, uh, patios and decks quite a bit. If we look at this, this is looking south down Dean Solomon Road. And this little area's become a river. This is looking south along Dean Solomon Road again, and it's very similar to the photo from one of our YouTube videos that Mr. Jarrett was showing earlier. You can see it's totally overtaken. So this one, I'll say, you know what? This is an issue with the, the area to the east. However, this is the golf course. This is area that should be draining off, but it's not, right? This is adjacent to people's homes. Um, this is the police when they were closing down Dean Solomon Road because it was dangerous to pass through. Here's a look last June at a similar event, wasn't near as bad, it was just a steady rain over a few days. Again, part of the course. And on the left is, uh, just off of Dean Solomon Road, and to the right is part of the course again at another, uh, time period. So what causes this? What causes this, and I'm not a geologist or a civil engineer, but if I were, I would call this a drainage basin. And this entire area that you see circled in yellow on this topographic map drains right to the spot we're talking about, and we do have the, uh, property there highlighted and green. So there's nowhere for it to go. This is a bowl, and the water that comes in stays in. And the bigger issue with it is that the, the gray or the steepness of it to the west is very light. So the water that gets there, it stays there. And it builds up, and it threatens people's homes, it threatens property, and it creates safety issues. And so without pulling this water out, pumping it over a ridge, it's really not going to go anywhere. And so we have to do a whole lot in this area if we're going to fix it, and, and I'd argue that we're not going to increase the grade to the west by digging up Clabber Creek, which is, uh, already a point of issue, uh, because it drains into the, uh, Illinois River for Fayetteville, and create a whole lot of damage there. So the last subject that I really want to address is crime. And, uh, we did hear from Mr. Jarrett a moment ago, and, you know, Lindsay has some data about crime, and, you know, first of all, let me say this. I want to be clear that this is not a knock on Lindsay. This is not an issue with Lindsay and crime. Uh, we appreciate what they do, they go through a, a lot, a huge process to make their apartments more safe. Uh, I expect this is true for all apartment complexes. But as we look at it, uh, we did want to compare it to Lindsay apartments to be fair to them. Uh, we didn't want to cherry pick some poor apartment building and, and use it as an example. So what we did is, uh, we decided, instead of looking at it at a per-unit basis, if we're talking about us having issues with the density of this project, let's look at it at a per-acre basis. So how many crimes were reported? So we reached out to Fayetteville Police Department, we filed a Freedom of Information request, and they were great to fill it right away. They were super, super helpful, so kudos to them. And here's what we found. We found that in the area surrounding Lindsay Shiloh Apartments, uh, over 2014 and 2015 data, we used two years here, uh, there was, uh, about three and a half calls per acre. Around the Lynx, newer development, um, there was one and a half calls per acre. Around the Greens, we had almost four calls per acre. The area surrounding the golf course and the neighborhoods, and we made sure to pull the neighborhoods in, uh, so this is all the way over to Salem and all, all those neighborhoods, .21 calls per acre. So what we're really talking about, on a per-unit basis, and, uh, I'm not sure how the, the message from, uh, our chief impacts what their statistics were, but per unit is not the same as per acre, and that's what we're talking about here. If you put this much, uh, density on this property, you end up with seven to 20 times the amount of crime that we currently have in our neighborhoods. And to me, that's not compatible. And so finally, we did address earlier the, uh, the zoning nearby. And so what I did is I just went in and I created a map, and I looked at this Fayetteville zoning map, and I took the areas that were zoned RSF4 or less, and I made them green on this map. Um, any civil or business zone property ended up gray, and then anything greater than RSF4, I put in red. And I picked RSF4 because if I had picked RMF 24, there'd only be one dot on the map. And so a lot of this red is, uh, RSF6, it's RSF8, RMF8, and so on. So it's still a pretty low density in comparison. There are no other RMF 24 developments within the watershed area. There's one area that's currently zoned RMF 24, it has about three houses and a church on it, uh, and, and no plans that we've heard of to, to develop apartments there. And then there's potential here to consider this spot zoning, and, and I don't know a whole lot about it. Um, I think our attorney can probably speak better to it, um, but I did think it bore mentioning. So in conclusion of all this, we're talking about putting 17,000 cars on a road suggested for fewer than 300, creating a traffic, um, amount comparable to a Walmart supercenter, adding twice the number of vehicles, the Fayetteville, or I'm sorry, adding, uh, more vehicles than Fayetteville Auto Park has to this one-fifth of a square mile area, exponentially speeding off runoff to an area that already floods, even below the area that, that they to an area that already floods, even below the area that they mentioned they would repair, and potentially multiplying crime by 20 times the current amount in the area. And there's one thing I did not address. Wilson Springs Preserve is a natural wetlands, protected wetlands, and it's adjacent to this property. And Terri Lane is the director. She's been great to work with, I would assume, for Lindsay and us, and been to meetings with both. And she wasn't able to be here tonight. So, our attorney's going to read a statement from her in regards to this, but it's a very sensitive area and ecosystem. It's the headwaters of Clabber Creek, and there's a lot of stuff here that does impact it. So, I'd like y'all to consider that, even though I didn't have the opportunity to talk about it. And so, I hope I provided enough facts and some scale to kind of make this more relevant and real, and that you're able to make a good logical decision that the residents all believe you will.
Thank you.
Hang on, Mr. Bull. I think there's a few questions for you.
I had a question. You listed the 93 households. I know a couple of people on here and was able to check in with them, and I see one household represented as multiple. I already confirmed with one person who's listed on this that they don't endorse these decisions, and I also see the name of another person who was deceased as of last year. How did you get these 93 households? And do they in fact know that you are representing them?
Yes, ma'am. So, what we did is, we have a Facebook page that has about 820 or so followers. We posted on there requesting anyone who would like me to speak on their behalf to post. And so, typically, it was someone in the household that spoke. The only exception to this was the Pines, in which their POA reached out, asked if anyone had a problem endorsing it, because they're right there by the RMF24. They're really standing to lose the most in this. And I don't know that anyone said no, or they sent me the list after he got back, who wanted to be on it and who didn't.
Right. Maybe that's how, because the deceased person didn't say no.
Right.
I think that that's just a really interesting...
Still a member of their POA. You know, the Pines is an interesting case here because, as mentioned earlier, it's an example of a multifamily area. Those are incredibly nice condominiums. They're people who are typically looking towards retirement or retirement age, and like I said, they have a whole lot to lose with this type of traffic generated straight across the street from them.
Any other questions?
And John, you've also reached out to people through your GoFundMe page, Drew?
Oh, yes. Yeah, we raised a significant amount of money through GoFundMe. We've had over 1,000 people sign online petitions. I think I mentioned that earlier. And we did ask, you know, tell everybody if they want to be removed. Two names were removed from this list before I did publish it today, and then, I think about six or seven new ones were added today.
So, you've got over 1,000 people that signed your petition?
I'm sorry?
You've got over 1,000 people that signed the petition?
There's over, there's about 1,041 signatures on our petitions. Those petitions should have been generating emails to you all. I apologize. That was overwhelming.
Mayor?
You go ahead.
Just, John, just, we've talked a lot about this, and we've met several times, just to be on the same page. One of the things that was talked about earlier is, they said that there wasn't substantial flooding on the golf course. Well, we've seen flooding on the golf course, but we talked about the environmental sensitivity in the area because it's very environmentally sensitive. The hydrology of the soil is very sensitive.
Yes.
What do you think more rooftops in the area are going to do?
Yeah, you know, that's the challenge. And there was a lot of discussion about the planning, at the planning commission level, about what this would mean for the runoff, right? And versus, with residential, single-family homes versus multifamily. And there was some bad math being done, I think, but in the end, the reality was, there's much larger parking lots, there's much larger rooftops, and the runoff is much faster with a multifamily development than a single-family home. We're also talking number of units as well. If we went single-family with this whole thing, even within C, we're only at 450. We're talking over 700 with the adjusted proposal tonight. So, a whole lot more rooftops, a whole lot more driveways, sidewalks, and roads here needed for this, and that just makes it go down faster, which is an issue. Wilson Springs Preserve, I mentioned as a protected wetlands, one of the advantages of those wetlands is to slow runoff and absorb them and so on. And so, it's doing a real good job to the, even if the pictures don't show it, to the east of this, of trying to slow all that. There's just so much in the drainage basin that comes down, but it's overwhelming, and adding to it is just very dangerous.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Yes, Adele.
Now, if you would repeat for me, how many, you said if you put single-family over the whole 120 acres, you'd have how many?
Yes, ma'am. It'd be over the 75 that are actually buildable, which would be more realistic. If it was RSF4, it would be 300 living units, max. If it's based on the current zoning, it's only 220. And then, what I did for NC was I used six units per acre, which is commonly what an NC development will end up with, and that was the 450 units.
So, it would be a total of?
That would be the total, if we did the whole amount. It'd be a total of 450.
And that would be building on the 40 acres that is the...
That 40 acres is part of the 75 acres I'm considering in that number.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so, if this property was turned into NC, the whole thing, it would be 450 units.
Yes, John.
Hello, Mr. Bull. You put me in a very uncomfortable position. I want you to know that.
Thank you.
And I'm sure you're pleased with that fact. What irks me, what rubs me the wrong way about your proposal is imposition of what I want on somebody else. When this city, back in the 90s, came up with their overlay district along the bypass, I was against it. I like beautiful areas. I like garden areas of cities. When I go to New Orleans, I enjoy driving through the garden area, okay? I like going through the old town of Fayetteville. It's very pretty, very picturesque. If the people of Fayetteville want to have a garden district along the bypass, that's all well and good. I have no complaints. Let them buy the land and do with it as they please. What rubs me the wrong way is when I want to impose my will on somebody else. You see, when government regulation expands, personal liberty recedes. And that's just what you're calling upon right now, is, "Big government, come in and stop this." I may vote for you, but it rubs me the wrong way. I've got to get that out, and I want everybody to know that. I'm in favor of personal liberty, freedom to choose, and what we're doing is, we're taking away the owner of Razorback Golf Course. We're taking away his freedom of choice to put in that place you and the neighbors. And I agree with the idea that Lindsay can't build apartments wherever he darn well pleases, okay? And I agree with that, and we should look at existing grids and existing uses. I was having a conversation with probably one of the ladies on your list, and she got me to commit to say, "I'll vote against apartments." I'm sorry I did that, okay? To be very, I'm being very honest and brutally naked in front of everyone here. So, I'll probably be voting with you, but keep in mind, what I'm really about is freedom for people to make choices for themselves, not to impose my view on you. I think reading your Bible is a great idea, but I never vote for a law that requires you to do so. I think brushing your teeth three times a day is a great idea, but I would never vote for a law requiring you to do so. I think you should be free to choose for yourself. We're adults. I abhor paternalism, okay? Telling you what's best for you.
Yes, sir.
You get a picture of who I am?
I understand who you are. We've spoken on many occasions. May I respond?
Sure.
Okay. I don't, you will probably find citizens who don't want anything there. And in fact, you know what? Probably none of us want anything there. But we all understand something's going to be there, and we understand that Mr. Kavnis has a right to sell this land. We just want it to be done responsibly and safely, and that's our issue. We don't want to keep him from being able to sell this property. I'd be happy to work with him to figure out how to divide up the plots and come up with a solution to get the whole property sold, but a single-family home developer can't go and buy 128 acres. They can't get a loan for it. So, that's the challenge. Our homeowners associations can't get loans in general. There's, it's a very difficult thing for us to go out and say, "You know what? There's 800 people on the Facebook page. Let's all get together and buy this land and make it a park." And so, those are the challenges we're up against, but I certainly don't want to infringe on anyone's liberties. We don't want to keep development from happening here. It's going to happen. We will encourage it if it's responsible. Our issue is just with the safety that this would bring.
May I respond?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I've been on this council for a little over a year now, and what I've come to learn is, when I hear the term "responsible development," it usually ends up being no development because we can put so many regulations on the development that nobody in his right mind is going to do it, okay? When you say, "Let someone else develop it," well, where are those "someones"? Right now, there's only one player in the game right now, and that's Lindsay Development. Nobody else is lining up to do it, you know? And I got a feeling, if this fish gets away from this current owner, I mean, another one's going to be a long time in coming, and he's faced with more losses and more expenses and things like that. I mean, you have to realize, I'm concerned with the individual. I'd be concerned about you if you were in that position.
I understand.
And I'm, I won't go that far. You see the difficult position I'm in?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I understand.
I want you to realize that. And market forces, I have great confidence in, and because there's nobody else lining up to develop it, that tells me there's nobody else to do develop it, or under these circumstances. And responsible development, that can mean a lot of things. I don't know what that means. I have an idea. I know what you think it means, but when it gets into our city bureaucracy, it can mean a lot of things.
It can change a lot at the planning commission level, that's for sure.
I've had contractors tell me, "Man, every time I build a house in Fayetteville, I add $15,000 to the price, just because of all the meetings I have to have, and all the, you know, the tree people, the sidewalk people, the street people, the drainage people, the bird people, the whatever." You know, we've got a committee for everything here. So, that's part of that responsible development that I'm concerned about. And who would be against responsible development? Of course, we'd all be for responsible development, but so many times, that's code for something else, and that's what concerns me.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mark.
When I look at this, I really appreciate what you've brought to us. I think it's good information. I appreciate what the other person brought to us. When I, I want to talk a little bit about responsible development. First of all, we can't talk about Lindsay or a specific project. What we're talking about here today is the density and the zoning of property, because this is not a planned zoning district. This is not a guaranteed development. So, what we have to focus our argument on are the possibilities of what can be developed in this area if we rezonate. And so, thank you for your presentation, and thank you for Lindsay, but that's not what we can consider when we're talking about zoning. Zoning is a huge responsibility. It is one where we have to look at responsible development. When I hear the argument, it costs $15,000 more for a home in Fayetteville. We have unique topography. We're managing two watersheds. We're managing the headwaters of two watersheds. We already have impaired waterways, so we are not the same as anyone else. We are Fayetteville with unique challenges of hills, valleys, basins, wetlands, and that's what we have to look at when we're moving forward in this discussion. So, I just want, you know, I do appreciate all this. I think safety is important, but we have, it's so much more than that whenever we're considering the argument, so thanks.
Yes, sir. Did you feel like I addressed development more than the zoning?
I'm saying in general.
In general, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else got any more questions for Mr. Bull? Thank you, Mr. Bull.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Alan, I'll turn it back to you. Do you have anybody, anyone else?
I'll wait.
Okay. All right. Would the council like to take public input now? Okay. Okay. Now, here's some of the guidelines tonight, those of you that want to speak. At least give us your name and address. I assume Mr. Rhodes, you're representing someone here, so.
I am. I'm Robert Rhodes, and I'm with the law firm of Hall Estill, and I am representing four neighborhood, excuse me, four neighborhood slash POA associations, Prairie View Acres, Crystal Springs, Creek Meadow, and the Pines. And I would, I would like to maybe reserve some comments directly for them, but because I've also been asked to read a letter to you from the Northwest Arkansas Land Trust, Ms. Terri Lane, as Mr. Bull referred to a second ago. So, it's a short letter. I'll read it, and then I'll sit down. This is dated today, and it's addressed to the Fayetteville City Council in regard to the rezoning of the Razorback Golf Course. The Northwest Arkansas Land Trust, a local nonprofit conservation organization, owns the Wilson Springs Preserve, a 21, I'm sorry, a 121-acre wetland adjacent to the proposed redevelopment site. Wilson Springs is a protected remnant of what was once a much larger wet prairie ecosystem. The preserve and other lands around it provide important ecosystem services, including water purification, flood control, and scenic value. The Clabber Creek bottomlands are a key piece of enduring green network for Fayetteville. The job of the wetland/floodplain is to slow and filter stormwater before it reaches our waterways. In doing so, the area buffers against stream erosion and creates habitat for many unique plant and animal species, including the Arkansas Dartre, a small fish, which is a candidate for the federal endangered species listing. We ask that the city council consider this important opportunity to find a win-win between the profitable and the attractive built environment and the needs and the role of the unique natural environment as well. Whatever development ultimately occurs on this site must certainly go above and beyond in considering a low-density, low-impact design and the preservation of the habitat. Thank you for your consideration, Ms. Terri Lane, Executive Director. And with that, I'll sit down, but hope possibly could come back.
Okay, Ron. Now, on a public comment, everybody gets one turn at the mic unless you're asked back up.
All right.
And keep your comments to me.
Yes, sir.
Don't get engaged with the citizen or the council member unless they ask you questions. You can give direct questions and...
All right. My name is John Calhoun. I live on Raven Lane, and my sister actually lives on property, or is building on property adjacent to Dean Solomon, so I'm in the area. My family's in the area. We're very invested, and we'll be traveling frequently on this area. So, I wanted to thank you for being here tonight and serving your city. I really appreciate that you have a process and that everyone near is taking the time. Tenable housing is an important goal. It's on your 2013 goals, actually. I'm sure you're all aware of that. And however, it's important, but it's not more important, nor should it be, at the expense of safety and fiscal responsibility. I've heard a lot of ideas approved tonight, some contested based solely on the financial impact, and I think that's very important, but there's also safety concerns that we have here. A major problem with this proposal for rezoning, and I want to be clear that that's what it is. It's a rezoning proposal, not that the citizens are putting forth, but one citizen and Lindsay to make changes to existing zoning. But the major problem with that proposal is the fact that there's only one road in and out of the property. None of the roads that Mr. Jarrett mentioned, saying were comparable, are the only way to get from point A to point B. Example he gave was Razorback Road. Stadium Road runs exactly parallel to that. There's a lot of other options. On this property, there's one option. It's Dean Solomon. I just moved here a year ago from Malmell. They actually made shirts that say, "One way in and no way out." So, we can learn from others, even their negative examples and their struggles. Dean Solomon is currently a tiny farm road, and it can't handle the massive traffic that would be caused by rezoning to RSF24. Both ends of this road have congestion issues. You can drive them at peak times, and you'll see they're going to be backed up. On the north end, there's a dangerous... On the north end, there's a dangerous hill with a blind, it's a blind hill. And so, many people are turning left to access the interstate to go through Johnson. That's how I go. It avoids some traffic, but it's certainly dangerous. And you're right there by a massive S-turn at Howard Nickel. So, really tough traffic problems to the north. To the south, you have Shiloh Road, which is kind of awkward, but it currently works okay, because there's not a lot of traffic there. But that's going to change once this is built, if it's built irresponsibly. The city does not have money, I was told in the planning commission meetings, to further develop these roads on their own. And there's, as like was mentioned, there's restrictions on exactly what the city could impose. They may have difficulty imposing upon Lindsay to provide a traffic solution, not only adjacent to their property, but hitting that northern highway sector and the southern Shiloh sector. It's not their problem. They won't be interested in fixing it once it would be approved, or anyone that would develop, for that matter, with that many units in play. Let's see. So, you'd be creating more traffic, which is dangerous. Many of us in the area commute, we commute north mostly. Getting to the interstate, whether you go north through Johnson, or on 112 there by Sam's, or getting onto 49. I've traveled every one of those ways, trying to figure out the fastest way so I can get north. And it's, there's not a great solution as is. If you add a significant number more of cars, you're going to have even a worse problem. So, let me be clear that the citizens, we're not against development. We are for doing it the right way. And what that means, to add some color to your question, is fiscally responsible and with safety considerations. And that's the role of government, is to protect the people, but not limit them to make their own choices. The only thing that the citizens have liked from the Lindsay proposal was the RA acres around the creek. The reality is that this is a flood tract, and there's really no development that can be done on it anyways. But we, as citizens, are for making sure that this is zoned properly to protect the wildlife habitat that is there. I think it's important to note that you don't have to choose to zone something specifically, the entire property, a certain way to get the positive benefits. You can choose to zone a portion of this property into RA that you feel is acceptable and makes sense, and the rest of it can be zoned differently. So, you don't have to do an all-or-nothing approach here. No one wants to prevent the landowner from selling his property. And actually, if I quote Mr. Fugit, who's not here tonight, but was the Lindsay representative, he said during a planning meeting that the rezoning proposal, if it was denied, the property was very likely to be developed as-is, which is a mix of different zoning allowing for different types of housing. Those are his words. He thinks it will be developed regardless. And I can tell you that the area that was developed just west of there, where I live, on Raven, three years, they've maxed out the neighborhood. They've sold every lot on that property. So, it is a very likable area to want to be in, but there's obviously different ways to accomplish this zoning. Let's see. The city planners had some great ideas for what those different zones could be like. They had considered NC, RSF 4. They said, "We have a lot of that already," but obviously, there's already a mix there between RSF 1 and 4 and 6. We have a lot of different options. And I just want you to consider the safety when deciding on this. So, I appreciate your time tonight, and I hope that, just as the city planning commission voted against the apartments, but was for development on the rest of the property, I hope you will do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to address us tonight?
Hello. My name is Carter Clark. I represent Mr. Kavnis, his real estate broker on the transaction. And I wanted to address a couple of the things that've come up through the course of conversation and also through public comment about the fact that the property could be used for multiple situations, and just how we've approached that throughout the course of marketing the property. We've had on the property on the market for over two years. And in those two years, we've had three potential interested parties, and all of them were partially apartment developers. Part of the challenge that we've seen with the property and making it develop is the fact that it does have the terrain, it does have the floodplain, and it is a large tract for a single developer to bite off and take into an approach that makes sense. And so, part of it is what makes it make sense for the Lindsay county, as well as the other apartment developers that we discussed, was the density value that you can get on it. And that was one of the challenges that everybody came to. I've talked to every big developer in Northwest Arkansas, as well as regionally, and it was just something that they couldn't look at as a single-family housing development with the terrain, with the large tract of land to make it make sense. And so, I've just heard it keep coming up, and I thought I would approach that, since I've been working on it hands-on for two years, and the conversations that I've had through the course of it. Also, Mr. Kavnis and I have talked a lot about the drainage situation that goes on out there. And one of the things that he has informed me of, that I didn't know prior to this, was part of that having 128 acres of tightly mowed greens is it does cause a lot of runoff. And so, part of what he has to do in the course of running the golf course is actually spray chemicals on the ground to create that absorption, so the tightly mowed grass will allow for that to be absorbed. And so, what I would insinuate is, through the course of the development process, you guys have rules and regulations in place through engineering to create that stormwater system to slow the drainage that's going on that currently isn't being taken care of because of tightly mowed greens and fairways that that water's running off into the drainage system. And so, I assume as representatives of Fayetteville, you guys represent and believe in the systems that have taken place and the regulations that have been put in place to slow those processes down. And so, those are just two things that I've heard in comments that I wanted to address that I thought were important to think through as you're deciding on this, on this matter. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Who else would like to speak?
Aubrey Shepherd, South Fayetteville. Don't live near the site we're talking about. But it shares some of the problems, and that's, keep calling it drainage, but it is what others have said. It's where the water soaks in, where the water doesn't run off so fast, because it soaks in. And I live on a lot like that in South Fayetteville, surrounded by it. But each thing that's built upstream is going to increase the speed of flow. If it's running through a ditch, a natural ditch with a natural soil, maybe some rock edges or something, then it'll slow down and sink in even in that ditch. When you put a big pipe through and try to guide the water speedily, it comes out someplace and does equal amount of damage. And a lot of those piped areas during these floods we've had over the years have, even with that pipe, had surface water running parallel to it and over its property and so forth. But in this particular case, something I said a couple of months ago, or maybe when we were discussing the land along, wrote it on my hand, Van Ash. I still can't get used to that street existing. But anyhow, the new Van Ash, I used to drive on the part that's up the hill and take pictures of the geese and the water and all these things. It was downhill, and the trees, they're gone. But most of the water from there comes right through this property. Comes right through this. It goes under the interstate. I said this that first night, two, three months ago, and a gentleman said, "Oh, no, our engineer tells us all the water's going off to the north." Well, I think he didn't say that again after he looked at the reality. But the majority of water, at least, off of that property rezoned on Van Ash, goes to the west part of it, at the very eastern part of it, the high ground, it runs off that way. And then, there's still the land just to the, immediately to the northwest of the, excuse me, Wilson Spring area that's being rezoned and has been rezoned, I think, part of it already. It's all totally wetland, except the high slopes around it. So, all that water, including a lot of water from inner parts of Fayetteville that come parallel to Skull Creek, parallel to Skull Creek, come down this stream that goes through this property. So, I can't agree with anybody that says it's somebody's right to build something that will damage other adjacent property. But we, but we're still going to, we're going to have the same philosophy tokened up upstream. When more things are, more infill is built, it's going to run even faster down this same bloodway. So, you've just got to realize, whatever rezoning you do tonight, or next meeting, or whatever, you need to make sure that the staff has the power, and the planning commission has the power, to bring you things to approval after that point that will not do further damage. You know, you really need nothing on that particular land, except low-impact development. And, you know, you can get a book, or you can get it online. You can learn all the facts about various aspects of low-impact development. So, please, keep that in mind. You lose a lot of control when you do a mass rezoning, because each part of it is a bit different. Thank you.
Thank you, Aubrey. Who else would like to address us on this?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Brian Sorensen, 2882 Purple Phlox. We've been looking at this thing for close to a year now, as neighbors to this proposal. And, you know, let me say this. There's one thing that we do like about it, or several people do like about it, and I think Mr. Jarrett referenced it. That's the green space. A lot of folks really had a goal in mind of maximizing that as much as possible. He did talk about residents on Van Ike, you know, the folks proposing this rezoning, getting a lot of support from those residents on Van Ike. I don't know who they are. I haven't met many of them. We heard from a couple of them at the last planning commission meeting, and they quickly changed their tune after we opened up the lens and started to talk a little bit more about traffic concerns. The green space is all good, but I think it's akin to putting lipstick on a pig, to some degree. And here's why I say that. And let me say this. I'm going to be a little bit more emotional than Mr. Bull was. He was really good with facts and figures. I'm going to speak probably more so as a parent of three school-aged children, 11, 8, and 5 years old. And we live right along Dean Solomon. And I'm definitely scared of the traffic implications here with this rezoning. No doubt about it. I mean, there's going to be a substantial amount of traffic. I mean, there's just no way around it. And, you know, when I reference Lindsay complexes, I realize that's not what we're talking about today, but for a frame of reference, I think it represents what might be, should the rezoning be approved. And so, when I say Lindsay, kind of take that with a grain of salt, just as a representation of what might be. But when I think about other Lindsay complexes, and it was said earlier, this one's unique in that it only has really one access point, and that's Dean Solomon Road. You know, we heard, mentioned earlier, some of the roads that have a less traffic than Dean Solomon, or were comparable in nature. Really, they're much longer in nature. Dean Solomon's fairly compact and has two very troubled intersections at each end. We've talked a little bit about the north end of the road already. It is blind. It is a white-knuckle situation, where you fear for your life when you travel it. The south end is also troubled. We see a lot of, we see a lot of test drives along Dean Solomon, coming from Subaru and Hyundai. And actually, I think Subaru is in the process of expanding their lot, so we should see more of that. So, what am I scared about? I'm scared about my kids walking up and down the sidewalks along Dean Solomon. I'm scared of my children riding their bicycles across Dean Solomon to get to Holcomb, to get to Holt, to access the trail system, which will soon come through there. That's really what concerns me. And, you know, talking about access points, another couple of complexes, again, as reference points to talk about, the cliffs and the links, I think they're pretty comparable to what might be here on this RMF 24 parcel. They have some major access points along major state highways. So, we're talking about Highway 265 crossover, and we're also talking about Highway 16, Weddington. So, I think there's a pretty substantial difference there. I saw in the packet that the council received ahead of the meeting, the bridge over Clabber Creek, I think it's along Raven. I might be mistaken about the street name, but just to the west of this property, staff mentioned that. I really think that, once that bridge is complete and we have access on that side, I mean, traffic's just going to divert further into single-family residential neighborhoods, which are low-density. So, again, access points are a big problem. Off-site requirements, we've already talked about that. Sure, we might get a bone thrown our way on the south end, but that north end is a real bear, and there's just no way we're going to get that fixed. You know, my children, other pedestrians, cyclists, we're all in danger as a result. And hey, let's face facts, a lot of the city's demand for apartment housing is really the result of University of Arkansas's growth. A lot of growth there, a lot of demand for student housing. And I really think, and this might be anecdotal to some degree, but I really think, based on the proximity to the U of A, based on the fact that this is only a short five-minute drive to campus, there's going to be a lot of folks in that, in what might be a Lindsay complex, who are going to school at the U of A. And I simply don't think that student housing is harmonious with my neighborhood in this area. So, there's that word again, harmony. We haven't talked about the NS zoning. It's really been something we've kind of skipped over a little bit. I think that there are some questions around that. We love the spirit of it. I would love a coffee shop. I'd love a dry cleaner. I'd love a tax preparer. But if I understand the zoning designation properly, we're also allowing multifamily dwellings to be constructed there as well, as I believe that's one of the uses. So, be it two units or three units, we could see duplexes there, triplexes and so forth. And really, nobody's talking about that, and that kind of scares me, too. Flooding, we talked, you know, you've heard plenty about flooding. When I first moved on Purple Phlox, and I am adjacent to the creek area, Wilson Springs is my neighbor behind my fence. I grew up in Northwest Arkansas. All I know is red dirt and rocks. It took me forever to figure out why I had 200 to 500 little mud volcanoes in my backyard. Those are crawfish. I didn't know that we had crawfish in Northwest Arkansas. I thought the only place you could get those is at a boil. But this is a unique area. It is truly a basin. There are no rocks. I had piers put under my foundation out there. The contractor who did that work didn't hit a single rock to a depth of many, many feet. So, it's a very unique area. Ms. Lane from the land trust certainly has some great points about the sensitivity of the area. You know, in short, and I'm going to wrap up here, I think this is a little bit of a round peg in a square hole. I don't think it fits the sensitive nature of the area. It just doesn't feel right. It feels a little bit like it's being rammed down our throats. That's a little bit of an emotional statement, but, you know, that's what a lot of us are left to feel. You know, we think, you know, there's the folks who may come in and build their project on this property, or getting a good deal on the land, and therefore, our safety has to suffer. And I don't think that's a fair exchange, quite frankly. There's plenty of property for sale in West Fayetteville. As I drive up and down Mount Comfort to drop my son off at Holt, I see a lot of parcels for sale. And sure, they may not be zoned for that use right now, but certainly with Mount Comfort access, direct access to Mount Comfort, they are much more reasonable for an RMF 24 project. You know, I feel sorry for the owner. I know he's, you know, had some bad economic fortunes. I really feel for him. I hope somebody comes in and buys this property and zones it responsibly. But, you know, again, I don't think that any of us living around this project should have to suffer because of those economic misfortunes, and the fact that the only person coming forward to buy that property, okay, is wanting to put an apartment project on there. It's a hemmed-in area without direct access to a good-sized road, and I just frankly won't. won't put my kids on that road, and that's a shame, because right now, it is really special. So, that's all I really have to say. I think anything other than a no vote on this proposal will surely be a sign that those of you up there today don't agree with me on that point, and perhaps, safety isn't a concern. I appreciate your time, and I thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Who else would like to address us on this? Okay. I believe, Mr. Rhodes, that you represent a group of folks as well?
I do, Mayor, but I think everything that I was gonna say has been said, is it of any interest of time? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna bring it back to the council. Yeah, John?
Mayor? I'm voting no on this proposal. But I'd say that Mr. Jarrett's arguments prevailed tonight. I'm voting no for one reason. I told some lady I'd vote against apartments. I regret making that statement now, but I'm gonna keep my word. Many of the arguments that have been made tonight are emotional, they're not factual. In a court of law, we try to get emotion out of it. In fact, we'll exclude evidence because it's too emotion-driven. So, I'd encourage our council to make a decision tonight, based on the facts that you've heard.
Okay, well, we're just on the first reading, John, there may be another week or two of this, so you might...
Changed my mind?
Yes, or not? Yes, Al.
And thank you, Mayor, I was going to ask that the council, if you're not ready to vote on this, this is something that I would like to bring up at the Ward Four meeting, and have further discussion on, I think it merits that, it is a large scale, many, many acres, so there is a lot to talk about. I personally won't be supporting this most likely unless, you know, it would take a large number of constituents reaching out to me to change my mind, because a large number of constituents have reached out to me and said they don't want it there. And for good reason, they've talked about infrastructure needs, they've talked about the flooding, similar to what we looked at when we looked at the rezoning in Ward One, with, oh, what was the name of that large development? Robert represented that group.
Falling Waters.
Falling Waters, that was the name of it, couldn't recall that, thank you, Robert. You know, I think there's a lot of things that we need to talk about and continue this discussion on, so I just don't think we should vote tonight, but, you know, specifically, though, when, and with respect, when Q. Jarrett was talking about some of the points, one of the points brought up was that there's not flooding on the golf course, well, we know that there's a lot of flooding on that golf course. It floods very, very often, so much to the fact that it comes up in people's yards, similar to in the area near Falling Waters. So, I'm not doubting the genuine nature of that statement, that they didn't believe it flooded on the golf course, maybe they just don't have as much experience with that flooding as the neighbors who live there. I think more roofs are only gonna hurt that, and the RMF-24 portion would increase the amount of concrete that's there for parking, so you're gonna see a lot more runoff for that. Topographical maps for the area definitely show that the runoff patterns do drain into this area. You know, we also heard some points about crime, and, well, the numbers were wrong in the presentation, so, you know, I think that's something that we should look at a little bit more closely, too, because the chiefs pointed out that Mr. Jarrett's presentation used inaccurate crime data from police calls, so. Another point that was brought up was that 99.61% of all apartments were full. Most apartment studies in the city of Fayetteville don't take into account apartments with units under 50, so that's something that I don't think the 99.61 is most likely accurate, I can't promise that, but that's something to look at as well. There's just a lot of questions I have, I didn't wanna get into a back-and-forth question and answer tonight, but I just, I just really request that we hold this, because there's just a lot of things that just don't pan out right now.
Just...
And you wanna present this at your Ward Four meeting, when is that Ward Four meeting?
That will be the 29th, a week from this coming Monday.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, Adele?
Mayor, I always listen carefully to our staff, and so, they are recommending this, so I guess I would, I would ask Andrew at this point, can you, how can you respond to many of these problems that we, you know, had heard, that we've heard? Yeah, how do you respond at this point, it's staff who is recommending?
I think the general rule, we'd go back to our recommendation on the land use, we do feel like it's compatible, I think on a rezoning, that's the main thing we would ask you guys to look at, is do you feel like it's compatible from a land use standpoint? Some of the comments that were related to flooding and drainage and traffic, those are more development-related, we do have development codes and rules that will hopefully address those when the development comes through. And so, from a compatibility standpoint, it doesn't, when you're looking at compatibility, I think you make your own decision on what you feel is compatible, what is appropriate in our opinion. Compatibility doesn't mean it has to be the same type of building, same type of home, so introducing housing, multifamily housing adjacent to single-family, we feel like it is appropriate in this particular case, especially given some of the transitional areas to the south. There's, it's certainly not an easy issue, there's a lot of very valid points made on both sides here, so we, as staff, we have also been struggling with this for quite a few months, so it's certainly not an easy task, not an easy vote.
Thank you. Thank you.
I would just like to clear up some assumptions that this is a single-family neighborhood, there's actually fourplexes across the street, in fact, that entire development at The Pines is fourplexes, and so, I think it's disingenuous for us to be thinking of this as a single-family neighborhood.
I'll follow up on that just real quickly, The Pines is a very small development, very, very small development, in comparison to like the Lynx, or, you know, something else of that nature, The Pines is not, I mean, it has a very residential, single-family feel to it, if you drive through that actual neighborhood. I mean, I've been in that area for a very long time, so...
I just get the impression that we're talking about apartments as places where poor people live, versus the single-family homes. And, you know, I hear these concerns about crime, and that somehow, by introducing multifamily housing, that we're making this neighborhood less safe. And, you know, we have a lot of development out on the west side in particular, that employs low-wage workers, that, especially, you know, the fast-food restaurants, the service businesses that are out there, and where are those people supposed to live? And this is an area, you know, that is connected to the trail, in fact, I know quite a few people who live in those areas that actually are able to ride their bike and commute to downtown for, to their jobs. So, in that sense, it does have some good connectivity, it's close to an elementary school, which would enable kids to walk to school. You know, I think that we have to get over this bias of single-family homes versus apartments, not everyone can afford to live in a single-family home, it doesn't suit the variety of lifestyles, or family situations, or economic situations, that our citizens find themselves in, and that we have to look at, you know, I think the drainage concerns are very valid, but we also, this is a large-scale development, so we have our drainage criteria manual, which would apply to this, and would limit the amount of post-development runoff that was allowed from the site. You know, we do have standards that deal with stormwater and with traffic, and, you know, if we're just looking at the rezoning and the neighborhood compatibility, which is what we're supposed to be looking at, then in a sense, I agree with planning staff that this is compatible. And so, I think that we have to caution, we have to be cautious in how we, you know, look at apartments versus houses.
Yeah. Yes, Al?
I'll follow up, I don't think I heard anyone reference economic or income status being related to apartments, I definitely don't feel that way, I've lived in several apartments. But when you talk about the drainage issue, I think this is very similar to the Falling Waters area, and we said that the drainage criteria manual wasn't enough in that area. And when you look at this area, it has even more homes in it, it's even more dense, and the problem here, when you talk about bringing in apartment complexes, whatever it may be, you know, we just know from the past, that's the business Lindsay's in, we don't know what they're gonna build, but this is a very unwalkable area. I mean, we're not gonna introduce a high level of walkability on Dean Solomon overnight. Now, if you go over to Salem Road, now, yeah, you do get into a very walkable area, but with limited connectivity to other areas, so if we're gonna talk about, you know, linking this area to a center of commerce, you know, we've got a long way to go before we get there on Dean Solomon Road, it's not a walkable area.
It's not walkable, but it is bikable, and there's a difference between replacing a greenfield site, a wooded hillside adjacent to an impaired waterway, which is a river, versus replacing a golf course, which has terrible infiltration capabilities, as well as the chemicals that they're adding, with homes in an infill site inside the box around our city, and that's feeding into more of a wetland area that is designed to capture and help remove sediment from the watershed. So, I think we have two different watershed conditions, we have two very different infrastructure conditions in terms of accessibility to services and connectivity, whether that's to I-540, I would love to see a bus route introduced there, but it's certainly easily bikable and connected to our trail network. So, I think we've got two very different situations.
Okay, we're going to be back in two weeks on this, do we need to continue on, or shall we wait for two weeks and get a little break? All right, so we just leave it right here for two weeks?
Mr. Mayor, before everybody leaves, you might wanna tell them where we're gonna meet next meeting.
Oh, yeah.
No, but we're gonna have a bunch of people that might be leaving.
Mayor, I can give some information. Council chambers is going to be under renovation construction through the month of March, so the next city council meeting, March 1st, will take place at the Ray Adams Leadership Center, which is the school board room at 1,000 West Bulldog Avenue, which is formerly Stone Street, so if you're coming from the west, you would take Martin Luther King headed east, turn on Buchanan, it tees into Bulldog Avenue, as soon as you pass the pedestrian protection signs, there's a parking lot on the right. So, but it will be at the Ray Adams Leadership Center, and the second meeting in March will be at the city, I mean, the county quorum court building, while this room is being renovated.
Which holds about 50 people, probably, or so. So, we'll be probably moving in and out in shifts, all right. So, with that said, we'll move on to item number eight. An ordinance to amend 72.58 off-street parking facilities, rules, and rights, to limit the mayor's authority to assign any city-owned paid parking lots or on-street paid parking spaces within the entertainment district, or the closure of city streets for the use of a permitted special event, for not more than two days per year, without express approval of the city council. Kim?
Whereas the mayor is authorized to assign, to assign any and all city-owned paid parking lots in the entertainment district parking lot area by special event permit for up to 16 days per calendar year, whereas multi-day special events that close those parking facilities and city streets significantly impact citizens, businesses, and institutions, as well as the quality of life in our community, and therefore, citizens should have the opportunity for input in the decision-making process, and whereas special events that request or need to occupy and use such city parking lots or city streets more than two days, should not only receive the mayor's express approval through the mayor's issuance of a special event permit, but must receive express approval of the city council for any and all city-owned parking lots or city street closures needed beyond the two-day limit. Now, therefore, it be ordained by the city council, City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, section one, that the city council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby repeals section 72.58-M, and an act of replacement, 72.58-M, as shown below. Quote, "M, special event permits needed to use city-owned parking lots, paid on-street parking spaces, or to close city streets, subsection one, events needing the use of city-owned parking lots for two days or less. The mayor is empowered by the issuance of a special event permit to assign any and all city-owned paid parking lots, and some or all on-street paid parking spaces within the entertainment district parking zone, for up to two days per special event for the use of a permitted special event or other necessary reason, for not more than a total of 16 days per calendar year." Subsection two, events requesting the use of city-owned parking lot or on-street paid parking spaces, or to close city streets for more than two calendar days in a year. Subject to the overall limit of 16 days per calendar year, the mayor may propose, and the city council may agree, to or reject, an expanded special use permit, which would authorize a special event to use city-owned paid parking lots, or on-street paid parking in the entertainment district parking zone, for more than two and up to five days per year. The mayor may also propose the closure of city streets for more than two days for a special event. The approval and any conditions imposed for such approval by the city council shall be by city council resolution. Proposed special event permits shall be evaluated by the city council, on the basis of, but not limited to, weighing the potential benefits and detriments to the community, impact to the public services, including city, schools, transportation, medical services, and the effect on the overall quality of life to residents and businesses. Any violation of the city council required conditions shall subject the special event permit authorization beyond the two days to be voided and withdrawn by the mayor.
Okay, Sarah, I believe this is yours?
Yes, I've been hearing from a lot of citizens and business owners about some of the adverse impacts of the larger multi-day festivals that we have in this community, and in reviewing that process, realized that there was no opportunity for the public to have, to have a voice in this process. And currently, if a special event meets the basic minimum requirements, then the mayor is authorized to give a permit. This would enable us to have a public hearing and hear from the many members of our community about their experiences with our multi-day events, and really give a place for public input, just like we have, we welcome public input on our land use policies, our economic development policies, and I think that we should also welcome public input in our events and tourism policies. This was actually initiated by a citizen and local business owner, Mr. Kerry Arcega, if he would like to come up and speak.
Okay. Thank you. Also wanted to thank the people who signed the petition to get the ordinance in front of the city council. I got over 800 signatures, approximately 90% are from Fayetteville residents, I allowed the other people to sign because they're in the county, and, you know, major events affect them also. The reason I decided to pursue the passage of this ordinance is because, after being in business for 25 years in Fayetteville, I know there's a major misunderstanding in the public, and with also city officials, on how major events, you know, affect the city. There's a common belief that you bring a thousand people in, you bring 5,000 people in, 50,000 people in, it helps all the businesses, that is just not the case. And the reason I'm pursuing this is I would like for there to be a public forum, so that small businesses can come forward and let them know, let you know, how it affects, how it affects them. I think it's a common-sense ordinance, it allows public input, and allows a discussion of these events, and it only affects the major events, we're not talking about a day or two. So, it's, I think it's a reasoned approach, this. Another advantage I think this ordinance will give us, and I got this insight accidentally from one of my customers, or one of the people visiting coffee shops, he was in Fayetteville with his wife, he's from Austin, they were considering Fayetteville as a place to retire. He read the petition, and his comment was, "Oh, it's good that your city is considering this now." He says, "In Austin, we have so many festivals downtown, that it's becoming maddening to local businesses downtown and residents, it's good to have a tool to manage that," and I think that's what this ordinance would give us. And I think that's what this ordinance would give us. It's a proactive way of dealing with it. I think we're gonna have to deal with it sooner or later because we're, we're an attractive place for promoters to come and wanna have their, you know, have their festivals or rallies. So I think it's reasonable to say, if you wanna have such a big rally, as, you know, to take over city streets and parking lots, or if you're a smaller rally that's growing, you know, it's your two-day event, now you wanna become a three-day event, let's discuss it openly, let's have an open forum on it. So I hope you consider it favorably, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to ask.
Yes, do we have any questions, Mr. Arcega?
Yes.
Questions? Very good? All right.
Thank you.
Peter, I asked him to look into parking in the area, so I think you need to hear his report as well when you make your decision, and you can ask him any questions you'd like to ask.
Absolutely, Mayor. We did receive some questions from Alderman Tennant related to our existing special events permit process. So if you will allow me, I'd like to hand out a little bit of information on the city's current special events process, walk you through that, help you kind of understand what we, how we currently handle our special event permit requests.
Sure. You can just give them to the clerks, we'll hand them around.
Your packets are tabbed for you, and in those packets, you'll basically find all the information that is available on the city's website related to special events permits, special event permit applications. All the permit applications are fill-in print, try to be as customer-friendly as possible to our event applicants. The first five pages of the event permit packet are the instructions, basically walking the applicant through the various sections of the event permit application. You'll notice on the very front page, we do request that applicants submit the permit application more than 21 days in advance of their permit request, to allow adequate time for staff to review and consider and make recommendations. In the event permit instructions, you'll see information on the various types of permit applications. Section 1, which is just general event permit application. Section 2, which refers to major event applications. And then Section 3, which relates to the noise ordinance, noise ordinance variance request process. You'll see contact information, various explanations on the event sections, rules related to event permits, and then finally, contact information on the fifth page of the instruction section. On the red tab, you'll find the beginning of the special event permit, Section 1, which is essentially general contact information, secondary contact information, event location information, event type, the checkbox at the bottom of page 1, description of the event on the second page, event duration in terms of hours and days. And then an important section is the event features section, which is a checkbox section asking the applicant various questions. Is there alcohol at your event? Do you have carnival rides? Are there gonna be elevated noise levels as part of your event? Fireworks, parades, parking lot needs, information about electrical services, restrooms, tents, cooking, all the types of information that are necessary for us to do a complete and thorough application. If any of those boxes are checked, that event features section that automatically pushes the event applicant to, to be required to fill out Section 2 of the event application, which would be a major, what we would call a major event permit, which requires a little bit more information in terms of street closure, duration, time, and location. We require a map as part of a Section 2 major event permit application, information around security, emergency response information, types and lists of vendors, alcohol information if applicable, fireworks, electrical services, restrooms, refuse, trash and recycling information. We strongly encourage recycling as part of all of our special event applications. And then finally, there's information on a cleanup deposit if applicable, if the event is being held on public, city-owned property. On the yellow tab, you'll find the instructions talking about the noise variance portion of the event application. Pretty much any event application that has amplification or live music is going to require a noise variance. There's information on the code section related to noise variances, the decibel and time limits related to the various types of use units, residential, commercial, and industrial. And then finally, on the light blue tab, the final tab in your packet, you'll find the actual application that a applicant must fill out if they are requesting a noise variance. So that's your complete packet, available online for, for applicants who do want to do a special event in the city of Fayetteville. When the parking division at the city acts as the clearinghouse, first receiving that event application from an event applicant, the parking division will review that application for completeness, make sure all the appropriate sections are filled out, and then will send that out to other various divisions and departments within the city that may be affected by the special event permit with a request for review on calendaring and the technical merits of the special event request. The first review that is done relates to when the event is scheduled and how that event relates to other events that are scheduled within the city. So for example, is this a football game weekend that we're trying to schedule another major event in the city of Fayetteville? Those two events may not be compatible. Another example might be a request for the use of the West Avenue parking lot across the street from the Walton Arts Center on a weekend when they have major events scheduled and are expecting to utilize that parking lot for access for their patrons. Those two events may not be compatible from a calendaring perspective. So we review the timing of the event, and then we review the technical nature of the event in terms of the street closure. Does it allow for adequate public safety and emergency response to the event? Parking, does the event request the use of a city-owned parking lot and, and/or a free parking, free parking designation as part of the event? We, of course, look at the noise variance application, what levels of noise are being emitted by the event? Where is that? How is that noise being managed and potentially mitigated? How are they monitoring the noise to make sure that they are staying in compliance with what their application states? Fireworks, of course, we're looking, fire marshal's office is looking at that, that portion. And then, of course, any other life security, life safety and security items identified by fire and police are all reviewed as part of the technical review of that event application. The parking division compiles all of that information that we, and feedback that we receive from the other departments and divisions, and we provide that feedback in one of three ways to the event applicant. We either approve the event application as-is, which is common for many of our smaller events that only fill out Section 1 of the event application. Many, most of our larger events that are required to fill out Section 2 and 3 receive approval with conditions. So there's certain stipulations that the event applicant must meet and that we check up on as part of their event production. And then the third and final outcome may be denial of the event application, which has happened. For example, we had a event application in the past year and a half for a helicopter landing at midnight on the Fayetteville Square. We didn't feel like the noise associated with that was compatible with the residential units near the square. If you'll recall, last year, the initial slide, the city application that the city received was also denied. They were able to, to work on their issues and come back and actually eventually gain approval for that particular event. Event organizers are responsible for communicating with affected members of the public as part of their event. So if there's a street closure, or if there's any need to remove vehicles from paid parking spaces, either on-street or in parking lots, the event organizers are required to communicate directly to the, to the impacted public. And, and then we also encourage and facilitate dialogue between event applicants and members of the public who may have concerns about that particular event. A recent example with the slide, the city request last year, some of our churches along Dixon Street were concerned about parking impacts with the Sunday slide, and so we had the Slide the City event producers work directly with the churches to sign and staff the church parking lots so that no one attending the Slide the City event would park in any of the church parking lots. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any other questions that you all may have related to the event.
Oh, I had one item that Alderman Tennant asked a question about in his email, which was, does the city actually provide approvals for multi-day festivals for multiple years, or does it do it each calendar year? And we do that each calendar year. We do not give advance approvals. So our largest festival, Bikes Blues and Barbecue, for instance, has not submitted an application for 2016 yet. We will receive that typically sometime around mid-year, June or July. We do have one application pending that is for multiple days, and it's from the Walton Arts Center. It's for a planned event for the reopening of the center after construction, where our request is for multiple days. So I just wanna make that clear, I think that's the only other question. Alderman Tennant, you asked about what paperwork, and so Peter has provided that, and what our processes are, and I think he's outlined it exactly how it works. The final sign-offs are by the mayor. Street closures can be done by the police chief for public safety reasons without the mayor's approval, or they can be done by the mayor for the event. And the parking lot approvals are done by the mayor as a part of the ordinance for the 16 allowed days. And that's the other check that we do do, is to make sure that when a request comes through, that we're not exceeding the 16 days because we're restricted in our bond covenants to that limit.
I'd also just add that in 2015, the parking division facilitated 71 event approvals through the process that I outlined, and as of today, we have 23 event applications for 2016.
Are those large, are those multi-day events that would be affected by this ordinance, or?
No, those are total events that go through our event approval.
On average, how many multi-day events that would be affected by this ordinance do we see each year?
Looking back in, since 2013, there would have been one event affected in 2013, one event affected in 2014, two events that would have been affected last year as part of the ordinance, and thus far this year, we have one event application that Don mentioned that would be impacted.
Yes, just.
So first of all, I, I brought this to you all pretty late, and my apologies, but you did an excellent job as normal as the city staff in getting this information together, so thank you very much. I just think it's important to get an idea of the process that is in place if we are going to make a decision to change it, essentially saying that the process is not what we want and we wanna change it. So thank you very much for that. I was gonna ask the question about the multi-day events, and thank you to Alderman Marsh for, for that question. I guess my, my only other question would be, and I don't know if you can really put a number to this, but it sounds like that there are multiple staff members in multiple different groups in city staff that, that put in a lot of time on vetting out these events before they're even brought to a final recommendation or whatever it is for the mayor to do the final, final sign-off. Is there, is there an average timeframe that you can think of, hours-wise? That's, that's to either one of you, Don or Peter, that it might, it sounds like each division has to spend time, and then cumulatively, the entire group spends time.
It really depends on the size of the event. So the events that we're talking about in this case, the police department is probably the most time-consuming impact because they deal with the noise ordinance variance, the request for street closures, access and for ingress and egress. They actually have a special events coordinator in the police department that Chief Tabor may wanna speak to, who actually will work with the event organizer. They tend to be the coordinating point on these large events that are utilized to obtain information and to make sure that we have the proper requirements. There are other single-day events that could be time-consuming, like a marathon, where we're doing road closures that impact much larger areas, or trail closures, or 26-mile related events. So some of those could impact Transportation Division or Parks Department significantly if we have actual closures related to those. But the, most of the time is spent on large events.
I just wanted to make sure that, that I was comfortable and that, that citizens heard, my opinion is that these, these are fully vetted. These are not just, somebody throws out, fills out a piece of paper and somebody rubber-stamps them. I mean, it, it sounds like to me that there's a lot of city time put into this, and I, and there should be. But I just wanted to verify all that. So thank you to the city staff and to you, Don, for that information.
Peter, at what point in the, in this event application process is public input solicited or accommodated?
There is no formal request for public input as part of the process, but as I mentioned, when we do receive any public input on particular events, we help facilitate that dialogue between the event applicant and the public so that those items that the, that the public raises can be addressed. Typically, we have pretty good luck with that, that process.
I guess, you know, when I see a petition with over 800 signatures on it, of people who are concerned and want input into the event process, you know, to me, this, this ordinance is about, should we include public input in this process? And I think the answer is yes. You know, these large-scale events affect everyone in our community, especially, especially the very large events that, that impact a lot of non-participants to the events, and I think that's where we're running into issues. What, what got me thinking about this more and more was, after attending a Main Street, Arkansas conference, they did a conference on sustainable tourism, and they talked a lot about the importance of maximizing high-yield, low-impact tourism. And they gave an example, similar to Kerry's example of Austin, but they used Fort Lauderdale. And when you think of Fort Lauderdale, you're typically gonna think of spring break. And, you know, for a long time, that was gonna be the, the spring break capital of the world. And what they found was that the type of, of tourists that that, that was attracting were packing four to six people in a hotel room, buying cheap food and drink from vendors instead of supporting local businesses, that they were requiring a lot of extra time from police and fire, and that that was not a sustainable tourism strategy for their community, and they've since rebranded. Because they did a lot of research, and they found that cultural and heritage visitors spent on average $994 per trip, whereas other type of visitors spent only $661 per trip. If you look at the recent report on Bikes Blues and Barbecue, they were showing average expenditures of $441 per trip. And so I think by looking at some of these metrics, and as well as evaluating the impact of these events on public safety, on our schools, on transportation, I don't know if you were able to read the email from the gentleman who was in a wheelchair, who when they disrupted transit services for the university last year for one of our large events, he was not able to take the bus to class, and he actually had to have his caretakers push him from Davidson Street all the way up to the University of Arkansas, which is quite an ordeal. So these impacts do, or these events do have very significant impacts on our community, and I think that it's our public's right to be heard and to have their input incorporated into this decision-making process.
Can I ask one more question? I'm sorry.
Yes.
This is actually to Alderman Marsh, and it's, it's just a question that I thought of first. So it's one thing to say that we need a public input session, but why then take it another step that the council needs to give permission as opposed to having a public input session and leaving it in the same decision-making capability?
Well, as we are our people's elected representatives, and just like tonight, when we listen to people and then we vote, by bringing this into the council, then that provides the input session and allows us to respond to that feedback.
Yes, now.
I do appreciate public input, which is why I would like for us to take this new information that staff has presented, along with the ordinance that Sarah has presented, and think about those two things over the next two weeks personally, unless there's some rush to consider this and vote tonight.
Yeah, I mean, I would ask, unless there's a pressing festival that needs this decided or something, I mean, in the next two weeks, I wouldn't have a problem.
We just have, we have one, I think it's not due till...
I mean, obviously, until the ordinance changes, we're going to operate under the existing ordinance, and so...
Yeah.
And so we're in the current process.
Right. I'm just making sure we're not missing anything else. I agree with you, by the way.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I'm going to take some public comment, because there's a lot of folks out here, I'm sure, that wants to weigh in on this. But just keep in mind, it's probably going to come back in two weeks anyway, so they'd like to be first.
My name's Renee Hunt, and I own a business on Dixon Street, French Metro Antiques. I've been there, it's my 13th year on Dixon Street, very grateful to be there. I also am, I've lived in Fayetteville 30 years, lived in the historic district for 30 years, so I am a downtown, midtown girl. I'm just really looking for the opportunity for public input. I think that's my main concern, is as a business owner, there's, maybe that doesn't own a bar or a restaurant, there's been a little bit of squelching. I'm not really free to express how I really feel about festivals that close public parking and public parking lots and street parking, streets for two days or more, or more than two days. You know, we're not allowed to really say too much because we're the minority. I'd say the small business owners, the book street owners, the little boutique shops, actually, I could even talk for some of the fine restaurants on Dixon Street, but their, their sales go way down. I have personal experience with that. So I just feel like we aren't really, have the freedom of speech to express, there's no place for us to have a public forum for the people that aren't involved in the large-scale festivals that close the streets for more than two days. So I'm just looking for an opportunity to express, you know, citizen representation, and you're my representatives. Thank you.
Okay. Who else?
Mayor Jordan, members of the City Council, I'm Joe Fennell, been on Dixon Street since 1980, and President of the Dixon Street Merchants Association. Dixon Street Merchants Association would like to express our overwhelming opposition to the proposed amendment to the Fayetteville City Council regarding 7258, commonly referred to as the Festival Ordinance. At our February 8 meeting, we discussed this proposed festival amendment. During our discussion, numerous objections were raised to this proposed amendment, and it became evident that our group was overwhelmingly opposed to this proposal. We felt it was important for us to take a position on this issue. Dixon Street Merchants Association conducted an official vote. I think you all got a copy of this today. The results of our vote were 17 against the proposed amendment and 1 for the proposed amendment. We feel that the existing ordinance and the procedures in place for permitting festivals are not only effective, but are already representative of the democratic process. We see no need to make changes to this process, as all festivals which impact parking are currently required to go through the formal permitting process. We also believe that Dixon, that Dixon Street is a place where all law-abiding people are and should be welcome, and that this amendment, if enacted, could unfairly target a specific group of festival patrons for their affiliation with a particular hobby, group, or lifestyle. This is definitely not a message that we agree with, and it's not a message that we feel we should be sending out to potential future, future patrons of Dixon Street in Fayetteville, Arkansas. We sincerely appreciate your support for Dixon Street and for all the merchants, and we hope that you'll join, join us in voting against this proposed amendment. You know, being on Dixon Street for as long as I have, there are businesses down there that, that don't do as well as others. As most of you know, I've owned a couple of them. I can tell you straight up, Jose's made a bunch of money. It's the hardest $100,000 in four days I've ever earned in my life. But I also own a restaurant called Bordino's, and I can honestly tell you that Bikes Blues and Barbecue does nothing for my cash register. But I'm not worried about my cash register. I'm worried about what I feel personally is good for Dixon Street. Okay? I don't ride a motorcycle, don't care to ride a motorcycle, but I do believe that what Bikes Blues and Barbecue has brought to Fayetteville and Northwest Arkansas is big, and it helps a lot of people. At the same time, I'm not naive enough to not understand that some people do not benefit. I can also tell you, as the, one of the creators of Chili Pepper Festival, Cross Country Festival, that Chili Pepper doesn't benefit a whole lot of people either, except high school runners in Northwest Arkansas to the tune of $480,000 in the last 25 years. So when you, when you start talking about the proposed amendments on the table, it's not about Lights of the Ozarks, it's not about any of these other festivals, it's specifically about Bikes Blues and Barbecue. And I take exception to that, because I sit down there and I go through that grind, and like I said, some of it's good and some of it's bad, but I do believe it's for a great cause, and I do believe it does good things for Fayetteville, Arkansas. And I do also believe that there's three other cities up there that benefit immensely from it, that Harrison, Arkansas, benefits immensely from it. If you drive around Northwest Arkansas when Bikes Blues and Barbecue's going on, it's affecting a whole lot of places. Okay? Some good and some bad. So I just would ask you all this evening to really think about this proposed amendment. I do think that the democratic process is served. I don't believe that anybody has an advantage, I don't believe anybody gets to have their, you know, have a better position than, than another festival. And I do appreciate all of the language we heard earlier this evening. So, yeah, 17 to 1 is the way we voted. And I can, I can honestly tell you that probably majority of those 17 that voted for it don't really see a lot of dollars. Okay? But it's, if you're on Dixon Street, then you, you need to be on Dixon Street for everybody. If you're down there thinking about yourself, you probably need to be somewhere else. Thank you.
Okay. Who else would like to address this tonight?
I have something to ask.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Joe, could I just ask you a question? I think, bottom line, what I'm hearing you say is you think that this would have a chilling effect on potential activity?
Uh, what are you talking?
People would not want to consider Fayetteville in the future because of this additional burden?
No. What, I didn't think I insinuated that.
What, I, I'm trying to get to the bottom line of the argument.
The, the bottom line of the argument is, I just think that this proposed amendment is structured strategically against one festival. Has nothing to do with the other festival. I mean, it just doesn't. I mean, how many days is the Lights of the Ozarks? Is it more than one day? Yeah, it's two, three, or four. Right? What about the people out there that don't believe in Santa Claus? Okay? So that's all I'm saying, is that, you know, if, if we run off Bikes Blues and Barbecue, it's going to go to downtown Springdale, and all those bikers are still going to come to Dixon Street. It's going to go to Rogers, it already's in Rogers, it's in Bentonville, it's in Springdale, it's everywhere. I mean, it's here. It's just whether we in Fayetteville decide to still be the host, it's not going anywhere. You know? And if we're talking about dollars, one thing I would ask you to do as a restaurateur in Fayetteville, Arkansas, when we have Razorback football games in town, you, you think that's, there's a whole lot of people don't like Razorback football games either, because you know what? They can't drive around town, and the noise of the stadium bothers them. You know, we're all bothered by all sorts of things. But what I'm bothered about is tailgating. Tailgating is the biggest disaster to the restaurant industry that there is. Why would we let people just set up tents all around football stadiums all over the world? Why don't we, why don't they just come to restaurants and spend money? It's 75,000 people in the stadium. You know how many of them go to tailgating? 95,000. And then when they get out of the game, what do we do? What do we do? What do, what do our law enforcement agencies do in this city? They take 75,000 people out of that football stadium, and they push them out of Fayetteville as fast as they can. Why don't we keep those dollars here? That's what I'm passionate about. Okay? Now, I'm upset about that. You guys probably not in the restaurant business, you don't understand that. When we take 75,000 people out of a football stadium, and the priority is to get them on the interstate and get them out of town, what do we think? And we need to drive sales tax revenues, not run sales tax out of town? How much property tax does the University of Arkansas pay? Thank you.
You want to ask him a question?
Mayor, I want to go on record, I don't believe in Santa Claus.
Okay, hang on, Ben. I think Sarah had a question for Joe.
Well, it was not a question so much as that I agree with Mr. Fennell on the whole thing with the Razorback, even funneling the traffic out of town. And I think by having public input, we have the opportunity to get these ideas in the public sphere and actually turn them into something. So I see this as not a way to stop festivals, but to improve festivals. And so I just wanted to add that to it.
Okay. All right, Ben.
My name's Ben Harrison. I just wanted to throw my two cents in. Seems like you guys are probably going to sit on this for two weeks. Is it possible, I guess, bring both sides of this argument together, have the public input session, but still leave it up to city staff to, you know, make the indecision instead of the city council? I mean, is that possible?
This is up to the, the city council on what they want to do. I mean, they can, there can always be amendments to this, of proposed amendment.
I just think that would be amicable for both sides, to not give all the power to you guys, but still allow for public input. Thanks.
Okay. Who else would like to address this?
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Unfortunately, a number of years ago, a former chief of police twisted my arm...
You don't want to introduce yourself. Introduce yourself.
My name's Kenneth Morton. Okay? I'm a local attorney, and what I'm about to say is how I got involved with Bikes Blues and Barbecue, and that's, the former police chief, Richard Watson, called me up one day, and all of y'all that know Richard Watson, he tells you something, and you gotta do it. Or at least back then. And Richard said, Morton, you're going to help me get a 501(c)(3) set up for a new entity called Bikes Blues and Barbecue. I said, yes, sir, chief. And so he got me involved then, and I've been involved since then. And, you know, certainly, I've got a number of things to say, but I, if, if the council's going to carry it over, certainly, I don't want to take, I know it's late, and I don't want to take up a bunch of y'all's time. I would like to point out one thing that, that Joe brought up, which, you know, I probably wasn't going to say tonight, or maybe not at all. We have always wanted it to help Fayetteville. The board members do. I think all the board members are from the Fayetteville area. Even though that we are getting, and this is just a thought for the council members, even though we are regularly getting offers which are pretty good, from two cities north of us, to move it up there. And I, and what I'm going to say now is, I just want you to think about this till we get together again next time, and I'll finish. We, each year, between Fayetteville Police Department and Firemen, we have agreed, and we pay over, all their overtime pay. We paid $40,000 last year, roughly $30,000 to the Fayetteville, for the Fayetteville Police, and roughly $10,000 to the Fayetteville Fire Department. We also give other money to those departments. We also hire to help their officers instead of hiring security people. We hire their officers that's off-duty. We send anywhere from 10,000 to 30,000 a year on that. And the point I want to make is, since this thing started, if this event got moved, and we don't want to move it, okay, but if it got moved because we could not deal with a two-day event because of vendors that we get in here, it just, it just wouldn't work. If it got moved, you're still going to have the same situation every night on Dixon Street because they're all used to going to Dixon Street. And it's not a festival. And what's going to happen is the city's going to have to pay all those expenses for overtime for policemen and firemen that's down there to try to control that crowd. And we're going to be spending our money somewhere else if we should move. And we're talking about probably 40, 50,000 dollars a year that the city's going to have to bear. It's not a threat. I mean, if we get down to a two-day, we can't make it function here because of the vendors that we bring in, they expect a minimum of three to four days to be able to come in. And we bring some high-level vendors in. I mean, it's like, I'm going to talk about major Fortune 500 companies. And so I, I think everybody needs to think about that, because the event will go on. Okay? It will go on. It's too far gone to stop. But if it goes on, certainly, we love Fayetteville, and we prefer it being Fayetteville. We're not threatening, but we just can't, we can't do it on two, two days. Okay? And if it goes on, you're still going to have a lot of expense on Dixon Street, which we're not going to be involved in, and the money's going to go elsewhere. Okay? And the last thing I'll say is that, in the time that it's been in existence, and of course, the first few years, quite honestly, a lot of money was not made. But since it's been in existence, our sole purpose was to give the money back to local charities, and it's given to local charities. Most of them are in Fayetteville, Arkansas. Okay? And over that period of time, we've given in between 1.3 and 1.5 million dollars to local charities. Okay? And certainly, I think that every person that's on the board, and every person that does the work, except our executive staff that we hire, executive director that takes year-round efforts, gets zero. We don't want anything. We want to do it, and maybe there's misconception, we're wanting to do it for some other reason than to help Fayetteville, but we want to do it to help Fayetteville and Northwest Arkansas. And we give our time, we give substantial amount of time, and I'm talking about professionals probably give 2, 3, 400 hours a year of their time to this. And certainly, we'd like to see it continue. And honestly, it will continue somewhere. If y'all don't want it, then it will continue somewhere. And I, I hope it's in Fayetteville. We want it to be in Fayetteville. But that's a decision we can't make. You find people make that, and I'll go over some more stuff, you know, at the next meeting. And thank you for your time tonight.
All right. Thank you. Who else?
My name's Tom Overby. I have a business at 211 North Block and live 1855 West Pratt. I really hate to keep you all here, and I'm going to try to be real brief. The thing that I have heard... The thing that I have heard over and over and over again from folks is that the events that occur, there's no way for a businessman or a citizen to easily make a comment. Now, Kate Williams says that people can talk to the mayor. You say we can talk to this gentleman. That's maybe true, but it takes somebody with some gumption to get up and say, "Oh, is there an application?" Those things are, I had to go get a, sit down and have a request to get a couple of years' worth of applications to go over them. It's difficult, it's not easy for a citizen to go do that. If you have a meeting on your agenda and it's published, they have a place to come and raise questions. We went to the Block Street Business Association meeting last week. They have a policy of not taking a position publicly, unlike the Dixon Street Merchants Association. But the majority of the people there said that that is the worst week they have for their businesses every time Bikes, Blues, and Barbecue occurs. This is not aimed at Bikes, Blues, and Barbecue. Yes, they feel like they're a target. If they're really good for the city of Fayetteville, let them come forth and explain to you what they do good, get your approval, and go on. And if people who are adversely affected have the opportunity to come explain their issues, then maybe there's a meeting somewhere in the middle. I'm not sure you want to put administrative staff in that position. You guys are our representative, we elect you, you should hear our issues. In discussions with city staff on these issues, and we sat down and had a meeting with everybody involved in the process to educate ourselves, at that time, they agreed with us that Roots Festival would be covered by this, Joe Martin would be covered by this, Lights of the Ozarks would be covered by this. And maybe more importantly, the event that's not yet knocked on your door could be covered. An event, as Carrie pointed out, that is one or two days that may grow to something larger, or if some really large-scale event knocks on your door. If you don't have a procedure in place, you're going to have trouble backing up and putting it in place. One of the things I hear from many, 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 many of my friends are that they leave town during some of the major events, because they're impacted by it. They remodel their stores, they lay off employees, they shut their doors. There's one 17-man law firm that shuts its doors on the Friday of Bikes, Blues, and Barbecue. Three of the people in my scope of my arms here tell me they leave town during Bikes, Blues, and Barbecue. I don't know, there may be more than three, but I know three, who've told me personally. If we bring 400,000 people to this town of 80,000 people, that's a five-to-one ratio. Obviously, only a few of the 400,000 are from this town. Does it make sense to have 400,000 people coming to this town with no review other than administrative review, which is a great job? It's their good form, they do a good job, I don't question that. There's no place for other people to say anything. I think there should be a procedure. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Who else would like to address this on this? Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the council, I assume we're going to hold this for two weeks.
Mayor, I do want to make one comment, so that it doesn't appear that staff's giving misinformation. The Roots Festival, Joe Martin's, and Lights of the Ozarks would have been items if this ordinance wasn't restricted to the entertainment district, which is how it is written currently. Roots Festival is occurring on East Street, or Block, East Street. Joe Martin is both downtown and in the entertainment district, and Lights of the Ozarks is on the square. So, the way that it's currently written, those would not fall under the scope of this ordinance, and that is why you receive different information.
And the only one that would, would be?
There's two now.
Well, Walton Arts Center and Bikes, Blues, and Barbecue.
We have had events, we had the LPGA concert that closed for two and a half days for setup, and the actual event occurred one day. So, this is not unprecedented in that area, but I just want to make it clear, because staff tries to give the best and most accurate information, and it wasn't until we realized that it was restricted to the entertainment district that those other events were excluded.
Well, in that case, I would like to work with our city attorney to develop an amendment to make sure that this applies to our entire city and not just our entertainment district, in order to be fair.
So, you said you wanted to make it citywide?
Yes, not just the entertainment district, any large-scale event.
Well, the reason it wasn't entertainment district, because that particular provision deals with how many days, 16 days that the mayor is allowed to designate free parking in the entertainment district, and that's why that's there. I'll look and see if we need to have a different subsection if you want to try to make it citywide.
Well, I just would like to approach all events on an even playing field, and I feel that our public, we need to have public input on all of these large events, whether they're in the entertainment district or not. And, you know, I think that a point that was made, you know, is that this Bikes, Blues, and Barbecue, you know, has gotten too big to stop it now, and that it's going to be here. And I think that that's why we do need an event review process before events get so large that we are powerless to have control over them. And so, I think that that is another reason that this is really important. Thank you.
Okay. All right. What announcements do we have?
Mayor, a couple of announcements. The Washington County and the city of Fayetteville issued a burn ban effective today due to the conditions. So, the prescribed burns for Woolsey Wet Prairie Sanctuary and the Lake Fayetteville Cali Prairie have been canceled until this ban has been lifted. And we also want to encourage all citizens to make sure they do not burn within the city limits until the burn ban has been lifted, due to the high risk of fire. Second item is the city board of health relays a flu advisory from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention issued as an official health advisory about the flu season and seasonal flu. Apparently, there is a rampant expansion of that, and citizens are encouraged to take precautionary measures related to contacting the flu. And then I want to make an announcement that we made earlier this evening, that this council chambers will begin its renovations beginning in March. It will not be accessible for meetings. So, the first meeting is March 1. It will take place at the Ray Adams Leadership Center in the school board room at 1,000 West Bulldog Avenue. The city will have, and the city clerk will have the directions and information on our postings for meetings so that citizens know, and we've done press releases, and we'll continue to do press information, so citizens know where to find us on March 1. The second meeting in March will be in the Washington County Quorum Court Room, where the Quorum Court meetings are held. We do want to encourage citizens that come to either of these meetings that there may be less seating in the actual chamber areas in these locations than they're used to. And so, as items come forward, for those who aren't coming for all the items, but coming for specific items, when those items are done, it'll leave so other citizens have an opportunity to come and speak to those items. We are adding extra seating capacity in them where we can, but they are limited due to fire marshal space ratings. In case the question was asked, why didn't we pick a different location like the Town Center? It's because it was not available.
Yes, Alan, you had an announcement.
Board four meeting, February 29, 6:00 p.m., Room 111 of City Hall. That's a week from this coming Monday.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you all, we're adjourned.